Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public. I will now call this November ninth, 2021, regular business meeting to order. I will begin tonight by acknowledging that buildings within Minneapolis Public Schools are located within the traditional homelands of the Dakota people. Minnesota comes from the Dakota name for this region, Minnesota Makochi, translating to the land where the waters reflect the skies, or cloudy waters. MPS recognizes the original peoples of this place and is committed to make ongoing efforts to educate the community about the relationship that Dakota people have to this area, both historically and today, as they remain here in their home. Thank you. As a reminder for anyone speaking tonight, including during public comment, please speak directly, clearly, and loudly into your microphone. For the benefit of all of us, but especially for our interpreters, for those using closed captioning, and for those who normally rely on seeing faces to help them understand, we really do need to project our voices to be heard through masks. And if you do briefly remove your mask to speak, please remember to put it back on properly after you've spoken. Thank you. In Director Polly's absence, I will appoint Vice Chair Arneson as Clerk Pro Tem for the meeting and ask Ryan to call the roll when needed. Ryan, will you please call the roll for the record?
Director Arneson.
Here.
Director Alamin.
Here.
Director Ali.
Here.
Director Sorio.
Here.
Director Ins.
Here.
Director Jordan.
Here.
Director Caprini.
Present.
Director Polly is absent. Student Representative Gabor Meskall.
Here.
Chair Ellison.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum. Next, we will approve the agenda for the rest of the evening. Director Arneson, will you please move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
May I please get a second? The agenda has been moved and seconded. If there's any discussion, please raise your hand. Seeing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We now have an agenda. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes before us?
Don't.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. The minutes for October 12th, 2021, meeting have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries and the October 12th minutes are approved. Our next item is public comments. Tonight, we have comments left by voicemail, as well as from those who've signed up in advance to provide comment with us here in person tonight. First, we'll hear the comments submitted by voicemail, which I'll now ask staff to play.
Gary Marvin Davis in New Salem Education Initiative, just a few blocks from the Davis Center in North Minneapolis. Teaching the students that you academically abuse every day your feet hit the ground. Extended comments at newsalemeducation.blogspot.com. Five years ago, I told you where we would be five years hence if you depended on a program that emphasizes a social and emotional learning, multi-tiered system of support, literacy, and equity. The last term is ridiculous because equity depends upon having a solid academic program, which you do not. How embarrassing is it that when literacy is one of the components, only forty-six percent of the students at the Minneapolis Public Schools are proficient at grade level in reading, and for most demographic groups, it's less than twenty-five percent? Further, thirty-five percent of students are proficient in mathematics. But it is further embarrassing that we would be turning cartwheels if you simply made success in those areas when students go across the stage at graduation without knowledge in history, economics, chemistry, biology, physics, large gaps. The time has come for a change. Four school board members seem to recognize that. Pressures need to build, the situation needs to be observed, and the decisions need to be made. There needs to be a general cleaning of all of those people who are incompetent in making academic decisions. Do what you need to do. Amend the situation.
Hi, my name is Sarah Washington, and I have a grandson who receives early intervention services in three schools, a daughter who graduated from Transition Plus, and also a daughter who went to Harrison. I want to start off, Superintendent Graff and School Board, thank you so much. Early intervention is so important, and data shows kids do better when they have access to early interventions. My grandson is making so much improvement. He is so polite. He is learning so many words, and it's all because of early childhood intervention and three schools. I'm thankful for Minneapolis Public Schools, and I'm so proud and so happy. I'm not afraid to share critical feedback with you, and that's because I'm passionate about the education of all students. I have mad respect for you, and I'm thankful that you is the MPS Superintendent. I would like for your contract to be renewed. You have made so many accomplishments, and I especially appreciate the expansion of mental health services. MPS needs consistency in leadership. There will always be ups and downs, but we have came a long way. Thank you.
Hello, this is Matt Tweeter. My children attend Minneapolis Public Schools. Calling to encourage the board to require all staff and students in Minneapolis Public Schools to have the COVID-19 vaccine in order to attend classes in person. I also wanted to thank Board Member Ira Jordan for suggesting that all students be vaccinated during your September meeting. Please take this up immediately. Our children have suffered enough disruption to their lives and education, and vaccination of all students and staff is the best way to ensure that they can continue learning and growing in our schools without disruption. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Persigal, and I'm the parent of two recent South High alumni and an active member of the South High community. I'm calling today to express my concern about the lack of a specific plan to address the persistent gap in educational outcomes between white students and other students, specifically Black and Native students. Two years ago, we were told this bold plan called the CDD would create integrated learning environments and free up additional dollars to, quote, "design a system that creates conditions for every student, no matter their zip code, to receive a well-rounded education," end quote. So now we have the conditions, but we all know we need more. The CDD has not stopped the decline in enrollment, as promised, and we know this massive restructuring alone will not magically close the gap in outcomes. So where is the equally bold academic plan for Black, Brown, and Indigenous children? What specifically are you going to do that's radically different to ensure our students have a radically different learning experience that leads to better outcomes? There are innovative models all across this country of what works for Black, Brown, and Indigenous children. We need to do more what works, and we need to do it faster. Board members, please hold yourselves and this administration accountable to boldly innovate with urgency and rigor. With the savings from the CDD and additional dollars from the American Rescue Plan, we have the resources. We simply need the conscience and the will. No more half-measures, no more excuses. Thank you.
Hi, this is Joya Freeman. I am the Director of Community Engagement from Voices for Racial Justice. We have a long working relationship with Minneapolis students and parents, and I am listening to them as they talk about the strategic plan vision and hearing them loud and clear about wanting better educational outcomes for BIPOC students. Now, I'm not going to go over the data in detail, because we know that. We know that Minneapolis Public Schools has historically failed our students, and the pandemic on top of it, and the learning loss is even more egregious. But I do want to say that the language needs to change. Saying all students are colorblind, language is very passive, I would ask the board to be more bold and show that they value and are accountable to our students and say, BIPOC, we changed that vision that all students to BIPOC students and their intersectional identities. I mean, intersecting identities are those special ed students, homeless, highly mobile students, English language learners, and our LGBTQAI and non-binary students. It's time. It's time for you to be bold. It's time to show that the leadership cares and values our students. It is overdue, very overdue, and it will change how Minneapolis Public Schools are viewed from students, families, and the public. It's the right thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Breece Ridgeway. I'm an MPS parent with a student at Northeast Middle School. I'm deeply concerned about how we continue to ignore our Black and Brown students, and I'd like to see the board be more explicit in our vision for our Black and Brown students. The current vision statement feels disingenuous. We need to specifically pledge to provide a solid academic foundation for our Black and Brown students. I would like to see the vision statement change to specifically note Black, Indigenous, and students of color and their intersecting identities, so that the board and district leadership are accountable to the academic outcomes of our Black and Brown students. We can't provide a well-rounded education when over half of our students don't read at grade level. We need to teach our students to read. This starts with the science of reading and adults making better decisions. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, Superintendent Graff, and Board Directors. My name is Kenneth Avon. I'm a resident of the Bancroft neighborhood in south Minneapolis, and I am with the Advancing Equity Coalition. I'm calling tonight to recommend that you change the vision of the strategic plan from all students, regardless of background, zip code, and personal needs, to BIPOC students and their intersecting identities. This change is not just about language. It is a shift to prioritize who our district has historically and chronically failed. I applaud you all for including anti-racist in your mission and vision to describe the type of education that education students should receive, but you all must lead by example by implementing a strategic plan that dismantles institutional racism and specifically improves MPS's ability to provide a high-quality education to Indigenous students and students of color. Additionally, a focus on BIPOC students provides a greater focus on the marginal, on other marginalized groups. We know that BIPOC students make up a vast majority of our English language learner population and are disproportionately represented in our special education and homeless and highly mobile populations. The presentation you are going to receive tonight, there is only one mention of special education, English language learners, and homeless and highly mobile students, and that reference is only made in how academic data will be disaggregated. No strategies have been named in how we will provide a better educational experience for these students that are largely BIPOC students. Changing the language of this vision and aligning the rest of the strategic plan to its sends a message to the city that the education of our BIPOC students matters. It doesn't mean everyone else doesn't matter, but it acknowledges the ways MPS has failed Indigenous communities and communities of color. After the pandemic has only made these disparities worse, this shift gives you the permission to be intentional with your strategies, your resources, and your oversight to provide a high-quality education for this district's BIPOC students and their intersecting identities. And when MPS can provide a high-quality education for its BIPOC students, MPS will be able to provide a high-quality education for all students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dobby, and I am a parent of an MPS student. I'm calling to ask that the language in the vision of the strategic plan be changed from "all students, regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs" to "BIPOC students and their intersecting identities", so that the board and district leadership are accountable to the academic outcomes specifically of our BIPOC students. The studies don't lie, and it has shown that students of color and Indigenous students are way behind in math and literacy before the pandemic, and it has gotten even worse in the last eighteen months. This district hasn't historically failed all students. It has historically failed BIPOC students, so we need to refocus on BIPOC students and their intersecting identities, which includes special education students, homeless, and highly mobile students, English language learners, and our LGBTQ students. I would also like to add from my own personal experience that I know the system fails me, a parent of color, of a student of color, specifically within enrollment admissions. I had issues getting my child into a specific class school even after I and his ECFE teacher of color advocated for him, only for the issue to be resolved when my white male partner intervened. It shows that there is unconscious bias in the system, whether or not intentional, and more reason than ever that the vision of the strategic plan needs to be focused on BIPOC students and their families. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sonia Emmerich. I'm a white disabled parent and an MPS graduate. I have a six-year-old child who has been receiving special education through Minneapolis Public Schools since he was two years old. I'm calling today about the wording of the vision statement for the strategic plan. I think that we need to clearly describe the commitment to the students in Minneapolis Public Schools who have been historically underserved, which are BIPOC students and their intersecting identities, such as disability, being English language learners, and having LGBTQ plus identities. I advocate for my white disabled child's educational access and equity, but that dream of equity will never be possible for my child unless and until MPS truly states and acts and prioritizes the students that this district has historically and consistently harmed and ignored, BIPOC students. It's time to be clear in our statements of intention. Please consider updating the wording for the vision statement of the strategic plan from students with various personal needs, zip codes, and backgrounds to BIPOC students and their intersecting identities. Thank you.
Hello, Minneapolis School Board. My name is Benny Randall. I'm an AE at Northeast. Speaking from my years at Northeast, the educational system is not allowing for proper growth for our students. I believe that no child left behind law should be revisited. Giving a child no accountability for the work and attendance that they put forth is detrimental to their learning process of the world after finishing their education. Kids are able to pass to the next grade with all Fs, very poor attendance, and a facetious mentality of learning. They are able to have multiple suspensions or be pushed from school to school with no proper counseling for them or their families. These same young humans are pushed to foreign schools to adapt to lifestyles or interact with teachers, staff, and other students that they did not intend to in a way they have lost their choice on who they want to become. I believe the intent of the United States is to be a contender and a competitor when it comes to international matters and innovations. Why are we not giving our children the accountability and responsibility that they rightfully deserve? We are not becoming fully accountable for our output into the world as of right now. We are only lowering the standard for a diaspora of education and not a community of innovators. Children should have the main focalization on socializing for psychological purposes at young ages. I agree with that. However, there comes a young age of eight to twelve where they're developing into a unique being full of their own choices and yearning for realistic and universal responsibilities. I believe it is our duty to guide them more efficiently through their choices by teaching them accountability of education and responsibility of community and uplifting their generation the right ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from those who signed up to provide comments with us here tonight. As staff projects the speaker list and our first speaker comes to the podium, I'll remind all of us of the public comment guidelines. Comments can be no more than two minutes each and must not mention identifiable information about individual staff or students and must not include profanity, insults, or threats. If identifiable information about individual students or staff are mentioned, I will turn off the microphone and end your comment time. And finally, please remember that this is an opportunity for us to hear from the community, but we will not respond in the moment to comments or questions. Jonathan Wharton? Please come up and speak. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Wharton, band teacher at Northeast Middle School. To quote another music teacher, "A lot of kids are super-stressed and anxious because the world is telling them that they're behind and that they're failures, and they generally feel defeated. They're afraid to try when concerts and performances have been canceled at the last minute, and they're juggling way more responsibility at home right now. School has fallen to the lowest priority for a lot of kids. Many students can't remember what normal was. Our students are lacking control. Yesterday morning, because of large class sizes and to adjust for teachers we have lost this school year, some of our students got a schedule change and had no input in what went on there. Some of my advisory students were justifiably frustrated. So when students are lashing out or displaying violent behavior, to me, they're looking for ways to take control back. So let's give them control. Let's create a student council with actual representative power. Let's create a school-wide behavior accountability plan and get all stakeholders involved in what happens when we, as humans, students, or adults, make mistakes." Stakeholders being one, Northeast faculty staff, two, parents, guardians, and three, too often left out of the decision-making process, the students. We are severely lacking a system of accountability in our building in general. What happens to a student when they curse a teacher out? What happens to a teacher when they act inappropriately? What happens to a visitor if they come in our building and cause harm? Let's create a policy in which behavior is addressed while still preserving our humanity. There is a lot of hurt and hate in our building, and we need to do something drastic, and we need to do something right now. Right now, our kids are calling out for help, and with the limited supports we have, we can't do anything about it. The kids are telling us exactly what they need, and that's with the current supports we have, we need to place less emphasis on instruction and more emphasis on togetherness and belonging. Otherwise, we are just waiting for the next target, and I'm afraid to ask, who is next? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jeremy Bula? Okay, Amanda Johnshug?
Good evening. This is my eleventh year teaching in MPS and my first year at Northeast Middle. In light of recent events surrounding our school community, in my classroom, we processed using our voices to create change. These are about seventy of our current seventh and eighth graders' written responses. I asked, "How are you honestly feeling about the events that have taken place in our building?" Their responses were angry, confused, conflicted, shocked, disgusted, proud, nervous, scared, sad, worried, good, bothered, discomfort, mad, frustrated, disappointed, impressed, surprised, and upset. These same raw emotions were repeatedly used again and again. I personally walked a group of students blocks away from our school, some crying because they were so afraid to walk home after events within our building. Others have had students hiding under their desks. How are we supposed to learn when we don't even feel safe? So far this year, I've received multiple threats to my own life, such as, "I'm going to stomp your brain into your head. You're going to get shot, and I'm going to cut you." These types of verbal abuse comments are not made by mentally healthy young people. As a staff at Northeast Middle School, we are living in chaos. We are drained, exhausted, overworked, understaffed, feeling not supported or heard, and many are afraid of who will be targeted next. The lack of support at the district level is unacceptable. We've had district people in our building observing and pointing fingers but have yet to receive any concrete support or help to help our, for, or help for our community to heal. Our kids are hurting and our staff is hurting. We're here seeking support. We need more mental health staff and an outside organization to come in and run circles. We need to see the way we're treating one another. I think we can all agree that putting trauma on trauma is not the answer here. Let's prioritize our mental health, and everyone will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Moore? No, Kelly, okay. Dana? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dana Laber. I am both a parent and a teacher here in Minneapolis. Vian Butler is going to speak for us.
Hi, my name is Vian Butler. I have taught and worked at Northeast Middle School for nearly thirty years. I'm deeply committed to the students, families, and community of Northeast and Minneapolis as a whole. We have often had the privilege of having very skilled, experienced staff at our school. Our staff at Northeast and throughout the district are in crisis. Never in all of my years of serving, connecting, and growing have I seen staff under so much stress, beginning with the tremendous technology learning curves of the last year and continuing this year, subbing through our free hours as well as business-as-usual feel of things. My colleagues at Northeast and across the district are highly skilled, compassionate, dedicated professionals and are starting to look for opportunities elsewhere because we are exhausted, frustrated, and we don't feel heard. Minneapolis teachers are innovative and creative. If we pause and think together, our path forward can be brilliant. I challenge you to listen to us, to come to Northeast and meet with us, to reconnect with the teachers who you are meant to partner with in serving and in educating. Please don't come and smile and nod and add to our too-long list of things to do. Come and actually listen with an open mind and be ready to think creatively with us about ways to address and support the issues in our building in a life-affirming manner, ways that breathe life and hope and joy into the hearts and minds of all learners, teachers, students, building admin, support staff. We should all be modeling courageous learning. There should be space to take stock after the waves of the last couple of years and regroup, and resources put toward connecting, to reconnecting students with each other and with staff. What are the new needs that our old ways of learning, of doing things, don't address? Where are you, district leadership, taking space and time to really listen and problem-solve with us? How are you partnering with the skill professionals who are feet on the ground every day to lead boldly into these new times? How are you allowing and encouraging those of us leading in the classroom to do the same? Please join us in listening to our students and families as we blaze a new and courageous trail forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Smith? Anthony? Brianna Harder?
Hello, my name is Brianna Harder, social studies teacher at Patrick Henry High School in my twenty-third year, all at Henry. And I yield my time to my social studies colleague, Carol Dahlman from Wellstone International.
Thank you. I'm a thirty-year teacher in MPS. MPS can take a step today for equity. It costs nothing and helps many kids. We can return to last year's grading policy. When students fall short of credit, we can use NC instead of F. An F grade is calculated as zero, while NC has no effect on GPA. Students often fall short of credit for reasons beyond their control. Many ninth graders struggle to transition to high school. Some students are placed in the wrong classes. Many move without notifying their school and then return. Others disappear for weeks while in crisis or to work extra shifts to pay bills. F grades cause GPA debt. When students fail several classes, often when they are fourteen or fifteen years old, their GPA drops so low that no matter how well they do later, they cannot climb back to the 2.0 they need for college admission and scholarships. Ironically, many colleges, like the U of M, have grading policies that are more flexible and equitable than MPS. MPS teachers supported a resolution to discontinue F grades in favor of NC by a vote of ninety-five percent. We urge Minneapolis to, first, return to using NC instead of F grades; second, make the change retroactive for all current student transcripts. Quickly, because students are applying to colleges now, review all grading practices, including elementary report cards, which have equity issues of their own; and, finally, review credit makeup and continuous progress classes throughout MPS to find successes and duplicate those and to support them to ensure that each student has a path to graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Brianna Harder? Oh, I'm sorry. Greta?
Hi, good evening. My name is Greta Callahan, and I am a parent of an MPS student. I'm a kindergarten teacher on release, serving as president of the Minneapolis Federation of Teachers. I'm here on behalf of the three thousand five hundred educators and over thirty thousand students I represent in Minneapolis. As you've heard a little bit, our billings are in literal crisis right now, and we cannot continue business as usual for one more day. So I want to just give you a glimpse into some of the things that the ground floor is experiencing now as we continue to ask you to invest closest to the students. Our lack of staffing is dangerous. Hundreds of vacancies and great educators are resigning every single day. We are subbing over our time to prepare for students, and they are the ones who are suffering. We have multiple IEPs totally out of compliance right now. This isn't sustainable. The lack of respect. We have staff being bullied and harassed by admin at a few sites right now, and there's no action being taken, and there's no mentorship for the leaders when this is happening. This is about a system. This is not about an individual. And one of our many staff who just resigned reached out to me yesterday and said, "I enjoyed my 30 years with MPS. I will miss teaching, but I won't miss being treated unprofessionally and expendable." The physical safety and violence. We have a roof being replaced at Justice Page right now. Students and staff are suffering from headaches, nausea, dizziness, burning eyes, nose, and throat. This is dangerous. And when we've tried to get this to stop, they're saying, "Sorry, the project must go on." Dozens of fights, death threats, destruction of property. We've had a carjacking. We've had theft. We've had a teacher maced by his students, which brings us into mental health. We have more students and staff who are suicidal right now than ever before. The kids are not all right. We must hire more school counselors, social workers, and school psychologists now. And COVID safety, our students are quarantining right now without devices at home. The lack of plan for quarantining students is different at every site, which is making this extremely inequitable. We've proposed solutions to all of this. It's not too late to do the right thing. I have a kindergarten teacher right now who has three positive COVID cases in her class. She found out from a parent at Target. There is almost no contact tracing happening for adults. And for our students, we've been placing this on the school nurse. At one site, due to being swamped with contact tracing for students and pulled to other sites, we have a nurse who has students with diabetes who have been in immediate danger more than once this year. We don't even have a full-time nurse in every building. And in a pandemic, as our nurses continue to leave the district, we are filling those vacancies with outside contracted services, folks who don't know our kids.
Can you wrap up, please?
And I almost am. And where are our testing? We have so many staff exposed who need to test, and we don't have tests on sites right now. We were attempting to negotiate all of this. You moved us into mediation behind closed doors where we can't discuss this until December. That's not okay. The ground floor needs you to put your money where your mouth is. You have taken plenty of our time this school year. I will take one more minute. We can change all of this before our students' lives are negatively impacted further. You can still do the right thing. If our students have the resources they need, their lives are stable. If we have safer conditions, we will attract more staff. If we are paid our worth, we will attract more staff. If we are fully staffed, we are safe and stable. I beg you to not continue with your plan to spend $159 million American resource dollars on HR consultants and an alternative licensure program, but instead, invest that money closest to our students now. Thank you.
Jennifer Luck.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer, and I am a 6th grade health and fiaid teacher at Northeast Middle School. This year, the 6th graders entered Northeast Middle School bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, and they carried with them this excitement of returning to in-person learning as middle schoolers. As you have heard from my colleagues, our students are hurting and engaging in harmful behaviors. The few students that were displaying these negative behaviors was small at the start of the school year. Students roam the halls, they cuss out teachers, they threaten physical harm to staff and to each other. They refuse to remain in class, and they vandalize school property. As I watched this all unfold during quarter one, I noticed the number of 6th grade students that have joined into this crowd has increased. So they too are now engaging in these harmful behaviors, and that makes me sad. Our students need to regain their social and emotional skills by learning to reconnect with the staff and classmates so they can be nice to each other again, demonstrate empathy, and show respect to the building and school property. The ramifications of more and more 6th graders beginning to normalize these harmful behaviors will extend beyond middle school and high school. In March of 2020, you asked us as staff to re-envision how we teach because of COVID. As we close in on two years of COVID, as a district, we seem to be sliding back to old ways of operating. We are being forced to teach and engage our students in pre-COVID ways in an ongoing COVID world. Our building is and has been in crisis, which is a symptom of years of under-resourcing. Now is the time to create a new normal of teaching and learning. We have this opportunity.
Please wrap up.
We have staff and students who have ideas and a willingness to do the hard work to help students regain their social and emotional skills and change the culture of Northeast Middle School. We know that you want Northeast Middle School to succeed, so please assist us in doing so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Henon.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Henon, and I joined Northeast last year and was immediately impressed by the kindness and support I received from staff members and administration. My online teaching was a positive experience. When we returned to in-person learning, my students, although hurting, were overall loving and kind. This year, our population of students has changed dramatically. After nearly two years of uncertainty, our students were forced to attend new schools with unknown faces and people with whom they had not developed trust. Our district denied our students all that was familiar to them. Chaos quickly became the law of the land. Inevitably, chaos turned to violence. Fights between students began erupting. Verbal intimidation from students to staff became a daily occurrence. Verbal threats and even physical assaults have occurred. There is rarely a time that our hallways are quiet. They are filled with a cacophony of curse words, frustration, and anger. So much anger. Anger over a system that has failed them once again. There is an ever-present sense of unease in the air. Questions run through our minds. When will be the next incident? Are people going to get hurt? Will I be a part of it? Our community was racing headfirst into an inevitable storm, and now we're in the midst of it. Our kids are hurting. Some of us are emotionally exhausted. We are understaffed and overburdened. We are judged for things that are beyond our control. We need help, real help. The help we have been given by the district after the teacher-involved incident, subsequent protests, has been laughable. What was the purpose of the area superintendent being at Northeast? He did not engage with anyone, staff nor students, not even a hello. We know there's money. If our situation is not important enough to warrant action, then what is? What is needed to happen for the district to prioritize its students and staff? We must work collectively to heal our community. Thank you.
I'm going to check to see if anybody who wasn't here when I called their name has arrived. So I'm looking for Jeremy, Kelly, Anthony. Okay. Thank you. I want to thank everyone who shared their opinions with us, both in person and by voicemail. Moving on, reports from the superintendent.
Sure, I'm going to call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to move to recess.
Going to take a five-minute recess. Let's come back at 6:15. Thank you.
Our next item is reports and recommendations from the superintendent. Directors, after any opening comments from the superintendent, we're going to hear an update about the CDD, the implementation and information about the next iteration of the memorandum of agreement with Mudpie, which we will vote on next month. After each of these items, we will pause briefly for any director questions or comments. Following those two items, we will then continue discussion on the development of the strategic plan by first hearing options for mission and vision language as requested by the board, and then also hear about measures and metrics associated with the plan. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead with any opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Good evening, Board Directors and those joining us here virtually, in person and virtually. I want to begin this evening by highlighting some exciting news we had from last week that our five-year-olds to our 11-year-old children can now begin receiving the COVID-19 vaccination, and also want to encourage everyone to visit the following website. That's where you can find out more about where to get your vaccine. And so what we're very proud is Minneapolis Public Schools to be able to partner with the Minneapolis Health Department, the Minnesota Department of Health, as well as other organizations to hold school-based vaccine clinics. We're prioritizing events in communities where a school-based vaccine might be the best or only option available. And I can tell you from our event last week at City View that the hopeful and joyful smiles of both students and families could be seen as they walked in to receive their vaccination. We do have several district-sponsored events already scheduled in the coming weeks, both in North and South Minneapolis, and our planning continues for additional clinics. But it really is dependent upon the vaccines. We, as Minneapolis Public Schools, do not have the ability to issue those vaccines, and so we're really required to work with partnerships at the state or with our local officials to make that happen. And just want to encourage everyone again, on behalf of all our educators, to take the critical step towards helping us end this pandemic, getting yourself and your children vaccinated. And would also like to thank all of the scientists, the medical professionals, and everyone involved in making this important milestone possible for us. We know that there's not one thing alone that will end the pandemic, and we do know that the vaccination is one of the most important mitigation strategies that we can take. Continuing on the positive front this month, I would like to make sure we recognize and honor the culture and heritage of indigenous people during Native American Heritage Month, which is celebrated throughout the month of November. And specifically here in Minneapolis Public Schools, next week, from November 15th through November 19th, we celebrate American Indian Awareness and Family Involvement Week. During this week and across the district, we want to celebrate, recognize, and raise awareness of our pride in serving more than 1,500 American Indian students in Minneapolis Public Schools, and celebrate the rich history of our native people. All of our MPS schools have been invited to join the Minneapolis Public Schools Indian Education Department in exploring activities that allow students to learn about indigenous populations. And if you're curious about what your school has planned, or have a great idea for an activity or an event, please contact the school principal or family liaison. And then finally, we are already starting to plan for our next school year. The process for identifying and choosing your student's school for next year begins on Saturday, November 20th. We refer to this as our enrollment season, and this is especially important for children who are going into kindergarten, children who are moving from elementary to middle schools, students moving from middle school to high school, and any new students into Minneapolis Public Schools or prospective students. So I want to encourage everyone to mark your calendars for Saturday, November 20th. At 10:00 a.m., we will have a virtual school request season kickoff, and families will have their choice of viewing the program in their native language, either English, Hmong, Somali, or Spanish, including the question and answer session. This will be a virtual event. It will be recorded and available for further viewing after the November 20th date at 10:00 a.m. So it's a great, again, it's a great opportunity for our families to meet our staff, and we look forward to covering topics, grade-specific information ranging from early childhood education, community schools, magnet schools, college and career readiness, student supports, special education, English language learner services. And then after the 20th of November and through February 7th of 2022, families will have a chance to dig deeper into the schools that interest them. Our schools will be holding open houses, both in-person and virtually, and schools will also make video tours available. Again, you can learn more about the opportunities to visit our schools by going to our website at mplss.k12.mn.us, and then go to Families and click on Visit Our Schools. So I wanted to make sure that I highlighted those important pieces of information that will be taking place this month. Next, as I mentioned, we're excited to provide an update on the implementation of the comprehensive district design. As some of you might be aware, this is our actual first year of implementation. I know we had many years of development and conversation and work to get to this point, so appreciate all the time and energy that has been put into this effort. And here in just a minute, I'm going to ask staff to share details in the areas of facilities, academics, enrollment, magnet schools, and on our teacher equity plan. These interconnected elements really do represent the comprehensive nature of the design and align to the goal areas of the next strategic plan, which we'll be talking about this evening. And while we recognize that when boundary changes are involved, that's justifiably where much of the focus and energy will be, and while intentional boundaries and balanced enrollment are certainly some of the essential components of the school district's success, I really want to urge us to view each of these areas as equally necessary counterparts in providing the education we want for all of our students and every student and every child in our city. You're going to be able to hear directors both about the exciting progress that's been made and also about critical but challenging work that lies ahead, especially as we continue to navigate through the pandemic and its impacts. So with Chair's permission, I'm going to now ask Senior Officer DeVette to please go ahead with the first portion of the slides, beginning with our facilities updates.
Thank you, Superintendent Graff. Good evening, Director Ellison, members of the board. Happy to present an update on our facilities under the CDD. Facilities is a broad term that encompasses much more than our capital planning and construction department, but specifically in supporting the magnet programs under the CDD. We did want to provide some updates on those capital projects. Now, in April of this year, 2021, we did provide a detailed update on the proposed magnet school projects for the current fiscal year 2122. So tonight's just a quick update on projects that may have been funded in 2021 as well as in 2122 in the upcoming bond. So specifically to Hall, we are in final design and reviewing the construction schedule and estimated cost before going out to bid to construct the observatory at Hall. And we anticipate a summer 2022 construction, so this coming summer, that we would hopefully have that observatory ready by fall. Just to mention, Hall is also a preferred site for additional installation of solar garden, solar panels to support the north side microgrid project. And we're also in the process of installing a sport court there that was funded by an NCAA grant for Minneapolis being the host city in April. Next, Bethune, this is one we've been talking about for a little while. The project is already underway with construction, and the funds that came forward in our 2021 bond were supplemental to other capital project funds that had been assigned to Bethune. Jefferson Global Studies in Humanities does have funding in the upcoming bond. So once those proceeds are received, we'll start design for science lab and performance space upgrades. You can see here that we expect that that will take another year to complete, but completion over the summer of 2023. Marcy, Marcy Arts, we had started design for the Black Box Theater and Movement Space to support that arts magnet program last spring. However, we're doing some room and functional relocations that pushed us out into this next summer, so we'll be completing, designing, construction on those two pieces to add to that Marcy Arts program. Next is the Sullivan and the STEAM Magnet Program. We did complete some preparation last summer to be ready to construct that robotics lab over this summer, and that funding is as well coming forward in the upcoming bond sale. Just a few more, pretty excited about this Anderson project. Over the course of four years, there are about $20 million in additional investment in Anderson that started with last year's bond sale. So the first phase, which we are doing now and through the summer, no, I'm sorry, that we did over the last summer, was lighting upgrades in some areas. We also had scheduled a limited kitchen equipment replacement in one of our kitchens that hadn't been used. Unfortunately, that was delayed due to supply chain. I'm happy to report that has been installed, and so that is now in use. So students at Anderson should be seeing some shifts in their menu patterns for lunches. And then we did some simple renovations for gender-neutral restrooms, each wing and each floor, lockers, and then some furniture for labs. But as we look at next summer, we'll be working on renovations and adding six to eight science labs into Anderson. We'll start the rough end of the centralized full prep kitchen that'll be located in the C Wing, and then some other air handling, lighting, ceiling, flooring upgrades, starting to bring more also throughout the summer skylight replacement and windows. In April, we kind of looked at that day lighting plan that was pretty exciting for that building, so some of that work will start this coming summer. For Franklin STEAM, we did build out the robotics space over the summer, and the next work happening there is science lab upgrades, that those are funded as well in that upcoming bond sale. And then last but not least, North High and the CTE Center, while North High isn't technically magnet program, just super excited about the $56, $57 million investment for North High that will really transform that building. That one is as well similar to Anderson, funded over four years, starting with this upcoming bond sale. And then also, we have the CTE Tech Center that'll be located on the north side at North High. And for both of those projects, we've completed stakeholder engagement and three community engagement sessions around the design of those facilities, about 15 different meetings with stakeholders over the course of the last six months. So happy to report that we're getting ready, we have a bid out for a best value contractor for those projects. Those bids are due next week at the end of next week.
Week at the end of next week.
And I anticipate we're bringing a contract to you for approval by February. ... Whoops, wrong button. And then finally, just some next steps as we look at the upcoming year. As we do each year, we'll be bringing you an update for years three through five of our existing five-year capital plan, starting in April with a finance meeting, and then moving through to June for approval with the budget. And then concurrently, working with our CDD implementation team to review and update what we call our educational adequacy measures, to make sure that the facilities that we're planning and that we have in existence align with the needs under the academic plan, and with that, review and update with the board our capital investment priorities for the upcoming years. With that, I think I'm turning it over to Dr. Fearing.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, member of the board, Superintendent Graff, and the public. I am really excited to actually present some of the work that's been happening around the CDD. It's in conjunction with what we also wanted to be able to do to sustain our academic programming, but with the CDD, we've had the ability to accelerate and also make sure that everything is funded the way it needs to be. So, starting off with our culturally sustaining pedagogy, and I did want to actually start off with this slide because I think that's the most important when we're looking at the ability for our students to engage academically, is that their experience in the classroom, in their schools, their relationship with each other and with staff, that we're really pursuing the equity competencies that Senior Leader Moore has referenced. The first one that we've really focused our attention on in professional development is understanding one's lens and bias. So that has been the focus last spring and then leading up into this school year. So I wanted to highlight just a few, this is not exhaustive, but I also wanted to make sure that I was highlighting the ones that are happening right now as we speak. We started last spring with Front Lines of Justice. It's an innovative approach to doing professional development, and I actually had the privilege to present at the Council of Great City Schools on this type of professional development that we're engaging with here in Minneapolis, where it's an online module, but it's a hybrid with, it's not in-person, because right now we're in virtual, but it would be in-person, where you would have a facilitator, but then there's some individualized work that teachers and staff members who are in that PD would be working through it to give them time to reflect on their own experiences and to create a plan moving forward. So last year, we had about 500 staff engage in it, and this year we have close to 500. So at the end of this year, we'll have 1,000 of our staff members who have gone through this. They also partner with Never Whisper for Justice, which is a media production, so they do create videos and have engaging content for the staff. Our Indian Education also has expanded its offering on best practices, as I'm sure most of you know about that PD set. We've had all of our building administrators take that two-day set, and then we had different offerings for our teachers, for them to engage, as well as our support staff. So every session has over 100 educators engaged, and then there's an optional sacred site journey tour that happens afterwards for those who've engaged. So we've had several educators engage in that. And then our Office of Black Student Achievement, they offer professional development, they have been targeting middle schools especially, to limit their scope because of the amount of staffing they have. But it's unapologetic advocates for black students. And so with that comes one-to-one accountability coaching, so staff can engage in that as well. And we've had wait lists ever since we started offering that PD. And then we have an online learning module for Latinx that was put together by our bilingual, bicultural staff here in Minneapolis, and it's a learning module that our teachers and anyone can work through and really learn about the different cultures and the backgrounds and the languages, and also have tools, leave with tools on how to better work with our students and our families. And then we are continuing to develop the same type of learning modules for Somali and Hmong as well. So that's the work that's happening right now. And then just, again, this could be a much longer list, but just some things to highlight that I think are important. Some of the resources and materials that we've invested in is having the tribal nation's flags here in the boardroom, but also in our schools. And we just heard at the last general leadership meeting, sorry, I need to slow my speech, I'm realizing I'm talking too fast, at our general leadership meeting, that we have teachers now engaging with their students, including the 11 tribal flags that are now in their schools, and including that in their curriculum. So I think that's really important, the presence, but also the integration into the daily work. The Indian Ed Department purchased sets of books for K-12. It's a pretty big set for the student, American Indian students, and they handed those out. And so if you would like to see a set or have a set, we'd be more than happy to share that with all of you, but it is an amazing resource that we were able to provide to students. And then, of course, along with that, we also have been able to purchase and include, and then have teachers incorporate diverse classroom sets and media center sets, that is by Minnesota authors as well as national authors, but really represent the demographics of our students. Just a quick update on our well-rounded education, so fifth grade instrumental, as you know, was a big part of the CDD, so that's been going. We were able to staff, and so we can have that go, that was one of the challenges at first, but we were able to get enough staff to be able to continue with our commitment. able to continue with our commitment to offer that for all of our fifth graders. And there's tentatively a fifth grade concert, district-wide concert scheduled this spring. So hopefully, barring the pandemic and COVID, I would like to invite all of you to be a part of that, so we could really cheer on our students and our staff who've made that work. STEM for All, we are making progress in that. Due to staffing, we have not been able to put together a comprehensive professional development session. However, we have been able to give buildings more resources and materials and have them have training kits that they can utilize, but we do want to make more progress once we're fully staffed in the science department. World Language, again, one of the commitments of the CDD is that all of our students, grade 612, would have access to a world language, and so we are staffed appropriately for that to happen. And then also, highlighting that we have now included the Takota language, and that is online, so that students across the district can take it. It's not just limited to one school. So really excited for that. And then our Hmong Language and Culture Pathway.
For our Hmong--
For our Hmong Pathway. We have our first group in Olson as sixth graders, so about 23 students that are there, and we just recently had the Davis Center celebration for that, and it was really encouraging to see the families and the communities embrace, embrace the work that we're doing with that. And then along with that is, for new this year, is our Somali Language and Culture Pathway. And between Lyndale and Sullivan, we have about 200 students that are benefiting from that, really wanting to expand the programming at Lyndale because of the enrollment. And just, I'm sorry if I'm taking a little too much time, but this is really important here, in that one of the projects that we're currently working on right now is with oral traditions, and so the parents are telling their stories. We are using a system where we're transcribing those stories, and then the students are going to create, draw the pictures, the graphics that go with the story, and then that's going to become part of the Somali Language and Culture Libraries at the schools. So it's really, it's really affirming to the parents and the community leaders that we have asked to be a part of it. It's carrying on their stories, but also students are a part of that process. So that's just one example, highlight from that. With the expanded high five, we expanded by 12 classrooms. We also included an early childhood special education classroom at Sheridan, so it's specifically bilingual, because that's at a dual-language site, so it's in Spanish. And then we also did our comprehensive K-12 Minneapolis Online School. So it used to be 912, and now we've made it K-12, and because there was so much interest, we actually had to add extra elementary sections. And so, as with the first process of any developing a school, we had some challenges right up front, but we have worked to mitigate those and to provide the support for the teachers and the principal at MPS Online. A little bit more on ethnic studies. So as you know, that has now become a policy for graduation requirement, so keeping tabs on that, making sure that our schools have what they need to be able to support students in this graduation requirement. So we have checked in, and all of our Minneapolis high schools have a plan, and they're able to implement this graduation requirement. We have five schools that are participating in an artist-in-residence pilot program as part of their ethnic studies course. Southwest is partnering with MPS Radio to create podcasts on race and identity, and if that project turns out to be a very popular, be very popular, then we'd like to replicate that as part of what we do in ethnic studies. We have continued professional development, and again, ethnic studies professional development is open to all educators.
Educators, it's not just for teachers that teach ethnic studies.
We've also have an expansion of our ethnic studies advisory council, so we've had that set up since we were developing the policy, and we continued that, and it now includes students, counselors, community members, U of M professors, teachers, and MPS alumni. Also with our college credit course access, so this speaks to high school programming, we have now, this year's our first year within our equitable funding model, so as we looked across our schools in previous years, we saw that funding was one of the systemic pieces that was limiting opportunities for all students. So from the district side, we were able to rectify that through an equitable funding model, so this is the first year that schools are operating under that model. We are starting a Students of Color Mentorship Support Group that's new this year. This is where schools can create opportunities for students of color--
Opportunities for students of color who are in courses.
--that can yield college credit, to have peer-to-peer support groups, but then also mentor students who are in other grades below them in retention and for passing rates. And then, one thing that we're working on is a policy proposal that would make taking a college credit course that could yield, I'm sorry, a course that could yield college credit as a graduation requirement, but that's in development. So again, we're in the early stages, and as we know with ethnic studies, it takes a lot of pre-work to make sure that we're getting things right, and we're going through all the considerations, but I thought it was important to at least signal and highlight And I won't go through all of these, but I did want to just show that we have also offered very specific professional development for Magnet schools, so that those staff at that, at those schools have opportunity to dig in deeper to the themes. Often with these professional development opportunities comes resources and materials, so we were able to fund those along with the PD for our teachers. So now I am going to turn it over to Tyrese Cox for enrollment.
Good evening, Chair, Directors, and Superintendent. I am going to give just a very brief update on enrollment. So the status of enrollment currently is being impacted by a variety of factors that we have very little control over. As we know--
As we know--
Birth rates continue to decline as they have over several years. The pandemic still challenges families. People are still concerned about health and safety, and so they are making other choices around that. The safety, both in schools and in our community, is challenging families as well. And then the other thing I'd like to highlight is that affordable and stable housing creates a perpetual instability for some of our families, causing them to move more often than we would like to see that. So the current enrollment is less than anticipated, and we are seeing a dip across all grade bands, but more specifically at the K-5 level. And so we are starting to develop some strategies that we think may be able to, to support that, or to remedy that. So because we were able to increase the number of enrollment staff, we are going to, we have the ability to increase the presence of our staff, of our enrollment staff at community events. And what that means is that we will take a more proactive approach to how we engage the community. That doesn't mean that we will simply be tabling at community events, but really be--
But really be out--
--in advance, promoting schools all year long. We will deepen our relationships with childcare. We see that families make big choices between daycare and kindergarten, and so we want to be on the front end of that, making sure that we have strong relationships with the, both the big and the smaller childcare facilities in the city, so that we are ensuring that they are both promoting us and that we are making ourselves available to them. And I mentioned that we will focus on the transition areas. I mentioned that pre-K is where we see a big dip, but also at the, going from elementary to middle, families are making conscious choices, as well as middle to high, and we want to make sure that, that families are considering us as their first choice more often than had been perhaps in previous years. And then lastly, we will dig deeper into the parent-based participatory evaluation to see what we can learn from that. What are the things, what are our parents saying to us, and how are we responding to what they're saying? And I will turn it over to talk about magnets.
Good to see everyone. Chair Allison, Superintendent, members of the Board. So I get the pleasure of talking about some really exciting data, and I'll show you a number of significant numbers in a second, but if you recall, part of the comprehensive district design is we had the idea of centralizing our magnets. We also deliberately, as we centralize those magnets, we place magnets in racially identifiable schools, and in fact, we flipped them. Previously, the majority of our magnets were in non-racially identifiable schools, those schools that are 86% or above. That matters because of the high correlation--
Correlation between--
Race and poverty. Got to echo. Race and poverty. We also deliberately shifted, as we centralized the magnets, we were deliberate in shifting money towards transportation in those dollars and shifting that to programming. You also heard that program, the effect of the programming, shifting those resources to professional development, that Dr. Fearing shared, a number of opportunities in terms of programming. You're also seeing, you heard Senior Officer DeVet talk about the exciting construction projects, and so we really re-envisioned magnets as we shifted those locations to our racially identifiable locations. And so what we're, there's a different, a number of different ways to look at how well we're doing regarding our magnets. One of the things, again, that we committed to as well is, we made the deliberate decision to allow families who were already attending those schools that were becoming magnets, we provided the opportunity for those families to stay. So again, when you're shifting to a racially identifiable school, you'll expect that the shift in diversity of the population isn't going to be as significant, but that was a value. We wanted to--
To support families who wanted to stay at their magnet school--
Shift that was changing in the magnet school to be able to stay. So if you look at the chart, there's the number, Spring 2021, and I'm looking at students of color overall, so it's a chart to the left. There's racially identifiable schools formerly were Bethune, I'm going to count Emerson, they're right at 85%, Green, Hall, Jefferson, and Sullivan. Sheridan previously was a racially identifiable school, but subsequently, over the past two years, they no longer became a racially identifiable school. The chart next to that, the column next to that, current, is after the shift to the magnet school status, or after the first year of the CDD, what is the current enrollment looking like? And so I'm looking at a couple of things. I'm looking for that number to be less than the one to the, to the left. Okay, so for example, Bethune, it's 93% students of color, now they're at 88%. So we're, as we're looking at, at that shift, we're seeing that five out of six formerly racially identifiable schools, but have decreased their percentage of students of color. So that is an indication that we've met our goal. When you look, though, the other important data point is your student of color kindergarten. The reason why kindergarten is an important data point is that that is actually the first year where you're not having families that are actually staying, so that gives us a true indication, if we continue with our work, and I think the numbers will be even stronger, true indication of if that kindergarten population is becoming more diverse, and again, we value the economic diversity, the racial diversity of our schools.
Sue, as you see the numbers--
Sue, as you see the numbers--
--of our kindergarten--
Kindergarten--
You're seeing some pretty dramatic changes.
Pretty dramatic changes. You know--
Bethune is actually their kindergarten population--
Is actually less in their overall, 93% starting--
Eighty-eight percent overall.
Eighty-eight percent overall. Emerson has gone from 76% overall--
Seventy-six overall, or kindergarten 65%.
So pointing out a couple of dramatic changes, Green was formerly 90% racially identifiable. They shifted overall, population of 74%, and in fact, their kindergarten is now 68. Again, the goals, we want our schools to reflect the district average, so again, indication of success. Jefferson's another one to point out--
Point out--
Ninety-seven percent--
Ninety-seven percent, the spring.
Currently, they're at 90%, but their kindergarten class is 76%. So when you're looking at the overall numbers of the magnets, one of the things we wanted really zeroing in is the kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Looking at these numbers--
Looking at these numbers, we do feel that we're being successful.
Credit to the placement department--
Engagement department--
A lot of the recruitment--
For our magnet schools.
Was online, majority was online. If you recall, part of the student placement, EDIA, there was more intentionality placed in doing more direct contact with families, taking the enrollment process to communities, and so that's part, as Executive Director Cox discussed, is something that we will be doing in the new enrollment season. But positive numbers, and certainly can answer questions, but I feel very positive about what we're seeing here. Sixth grade is a little more complex, so we have two schools that are K-8, so that will be Sullivan and Jefferson. And then Anderson converted from a K-5 to a 6-8, and then Franklin remained a 6-8. Anderson is the most dramatic, and you heard a bit about Anderson at the last board presentation about some really exciting things they're doing regarding climate, testament to leadership as well as their teacher leaders, their ESPs, the entire staff, the community, but you see the dramatic decrease. They were formerly 95% students of color, and I'll add roughly 98% free reduced lunch. And so currently, they're at 72%, and their sixth grade is matching that. That's Anderson dual-language, but that's actually the total Anderson, Anderson School. So it's gone from 95% to 72% overall, and 73% sixth grade, so we're on track there. Franklin, we're not quite there in terms of reducing their racially identifiable status, but you do see a decrease in the concentration of students of color, and subsequently, you'll see a decrease in the concentration of poverty. You do see the sixth grade is 86%, so it's right where we want to be. Again, it's declining. Jefferson is one we're taking a deeper look, while they are declining at their sixth grade. That was a data point where while we're seeing more diversity of different groups attending kindergarten, we didn't see the same entry at sixth grade, and so we want to examine that, examine what happened there. And then Sullivan is very unique, the last one. They are decreasing, 94% is a racially identifiable, they're still racially identifiable school, they're at 89%. Sixth grade is coming at 84. What's interesting about Sullivan, I'll just add, is that that was intentional, we were intentional about putting a Somali pathway program. That was a value decision, is that we wanted to have a Somali pathway, both at Lyndale as well at Sullivan. So that drove, that's going to drive those numbers up a bit, but again, we think the program is viable, it's needed, and so that's a decision that we made. So those are the numbers, but again, we look at kindergarten, sixth grade overall. It looks very positive, and happy to answer any questions, but I predict--
I predict that as we go into the second round of our enrollments this year two--
Numbers will get even better--
Program will get stronger.
As the construction projects happen, so feel extremely positive. I'm going to turn it over to Senior Officer Sullivan to talk about licensure pathways.
Chair Allison, Board Director, Superintendent, I'm excited to be here tonight to provide two brief updates on our licensure pathway and teacher equity plan, two components of the CDD as well. We're excited to be deepening our teacher pathway programs. These are some of our most diverse pathways and tap into the rich diversity of our students and staff. We're very excited to share that we submitted our final application to the state last week to become our own licensing body. If approved, this does allow us to create a tuition-free option for licensure for our staff and those that support our students. Just for next steps, we're looking to have a site visit from the state early December, followed by a vote from the State Board of Licensing in the spring, and our goal would be to launch our first cohort in spring of 2023. What's really exciting about this program is we're building it not just based on best practice research, but also listening to the voices of our families and our students as we design these programs. We are also continuing and deepening our high school pathway program. We've been at Henry for the last two years and have expanded this year to South High. This is in partnership with Minneapolis College, so this allows our students, from a concurrent enrollment standpoint, to get tuition and get credits that could go to licensure while they're in high school. And we've most recently added a summer internship program, where our high school students are working in our summer school programs, coaching and supporting and tutoring our youngest learners, and getting that, that experience. We're also really thrilled to announce with ESSER's support that we're going to be able to expand those tutoring and internship opportunities. Again, where our high school students are working with our youngest learners and getting that teaching experience. And finally, we are continuing our special education residency in partnership with St. Thomas. Thomas, and that does continue to be our most diverse teacher pipeline. In terms of the teacher equity plan, as you may remember, this is part of the ESSA requirements as well as our workforce, but it is really looking at how do we support staffing at our highest need sites? So we have invested in some strategic staffing support for these sites, as well as work through bargaining and negotiations to ensure that we have layoff protections for teachers at these sites, as well as additional resources for substitute teaching. And then finally, we're continuing at the bargaining table to work on MOAs that will continue to support these sites, like our teachers at Baller M O A. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Superintendent.
Thank you, everyone, for the presentation this evening. And please remain where you are, because I'm sure we'll have some questions here from directors. But I wanted to just reinforce the magnitude of the work that's gone into this comprehensive district design. Again, you can see it is so much more than just one item, there's multiple layers and intersectionality with how this, this work is going to continue to support the mission and vision of the district as well as the strategic plan. So with that, Chair Ellison, we are happy to take questions.
Thank you. Directors, please hit your request to speak button if you have any questions or comments. Director Ins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had just a quick question about the enrollment of middle schools and the Spanish immersion pathway for the middle schools. So we moved that program from Anwatin to Anderson. And I'm just wondering if there's any data with respect to whether or not we've seen increase, decrease. You know, I think the central location of that was an important thing, as we try to draw students from all over the district to that program. So do you have any of that?
I'm pulling it up right now.
All right, thank you. My mask is like.
So one of the, you know, we saw a really nice shift of the Anwatin family, a number of them chose Anderson. I think a, in this sense, we made some good efforts and leadership, but meeting with. All right. Right.
Okay. So, so we did, we were very deliberate of having leadership meet with families, talking about the incredible program that we're going to build at Anderson. We are also very fortunate to have the majority of staff that taught at the Anwatin dual language program, they did, choose to move to Anderson. And so that supported continuity. We did not see a significant drop off in enrollment. In fact, we were above projections in terms of our participation in our, in our dual language program over at Anderson. And in fact, we added staff. I mean, that was part one of our staffing adjustment locations. So, you know, I think it is testament to leadership and also just deliberate recruitment, ensuring we have the relationship with families. And then I think some confidence of the community that that's going to be a strong program. So very positive, did not see a major drop off.
Okay, thank you. Do you have the data there, or is there, are there actual numbers, or?
I'm looking at percentages, but I can pull up the numbers as well. So I can certainly pull it up tonight or send that as part of the board update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Arneson?
Thanks. Thanks so much for that update, everyone. I really, really appreciate that. In particular, I think one of the, at least I had two major goals with the comprehensive district design. One was to reduce racially isolated schools. So I'm really, I'm glad to see some dramatic numbers. In fact, I think it's the most dramatic numbers, or the dramatic, most dramatic change I've seen since being on the board for 10 years. Again, we did talk about that. So looking forward to, so I'm appreciating that and looking forward to next year as well. So we'll be glad to continue to use that as a data point, as an assessment, as a data point. The second piece was about redistributing resources. So was glad to hear the band as a very concrete example, fifth grade band. So of course, would love to go to the concert in the spring. I'm not looking for an update here tonight, we are out of time, are out of, we have limited time. But I think another kind of concrete kind of data point with distributing resources is about after-school activities. So we'll want to, not, not here tonight or even in the near future, but in the future, we can maybe include that as well, are we talking about that? I know we have some particular, it's just such a unique, such a unique time with pandemic and staffing. So it's a little bit complicated to kind of sift out really all of this data about what is CDD related, what is pandemic related, all of these different factors. So to me, that's more of a kind of a long-term discussion as some of the, hopefully, the pandemic sorts itself out and things become a little clearer, one way or the other. So we'll look for that. And also, and I recall that this was kind of a long-term plan, but the CTE stuff, and I know we were not planning to implement that this year. So we'll, in future discussions, we'll look forward to, that's another kind of resource distribution that we were, or access that we were talking about. So we'll add that to something we can talk about in the future. And then another thing to talk about in the future when we talk about enrollment, I guess I'm glad to hear about the discussion here, good information. We've talked a lot about magnet schools, and I know that it's important to track the enrollment of community schools. And we drew these boundaries, and we knew very intentionally that at least part of this discussion was, was, we were not interested in closing schools. We were trying to set schools up for success, knowing that, knowing that our city and neighborhoods need to invest in their schools if they want them to continue to be there. So I want to be open and talking, openly talking about how we're doing in our community schools, so we can be honest with those communities as we move along, right, with these, in these years. I know at least in the neighborhood I represent, that's something that is really, I try and talk openly about that, right? And I say to neighbors, it's important for us to, for the school district, to give your children the resources they need, but we in return must send our children to these schools if you want them to be here. So that's, that's the sort of conversations we have in my neighborhood, and it's helpful to continue to talk about where we're at with that enrollment in future conversations. It looks like you want to say something. Sorry, I let you say something. Oh, no, that's fine. And the only other thing is, you mentioned the construction at Anderson, and I know we are approving, it's on the consent agenda tonight for a Hennepin County youth sports grant on the gym. So I'm thinking that's part of this as well, that we're approving the gym clearly as part of this construction project. That's all. I let you respond. Sorry for all the questions.
No, thank you. I just wanted to reinforce, I appreciate the topics you've noted, the after-school, the CTE, as well as Director Ins's comment around the enrollment at Anderson. But the last point of the community schools and the impact of boundaries around our enrollment, and that is, it is important for us to continue to have that conversation at the forefront of, of our process that we will be going into with our enrollment season, looking at our enrollment numbers for our budget development for next year. We made a conscious decision when we started this, this design work to really create conditions for success in all our schools. And it was very apparent when I came into this district where people said, the enrollment in the district has declined over the years, and the number of schools that we have does not align with the number of students that we have. And while that's certainly an accurate observation, I think the observation was also that we had not spent the level of investment or the adjustments of our resource allocation in an equitable manner, or in a manner that was equal to the values of the board. And so this is what we have done this past year and a half of creating this, this comprehensive district design. And it doesn't mean that we are finished. It means that we have to continue to monitor and we continue to have the conversation about what is the right number of schools, what is the right amount of investment that we're putting in? Because every dollar we spend in one location has an impact on the overall budget in the overall district. So I do look forward to that conversation, and I do not want anyone to think that we aren't willing to have the discussion. It's just one that comes with a lot of trade-offs and a lot of impact to our community, so.
Correct. And the way to start that for sure, I think, is talking about where we're at with these. And I should note too, we did earlier this year talk about the high school numbers, I guess it was in the spring, and we certainly are seeing, in fact, that the enrollment is balancing out, at least at the high school level. So we have previously talked about that. So it would just be an important continued conversation. So, thank you.
Director Arneson, Chair Ellison, I just wanted to mention overall, the total number of racially identifiable schools, racially identifiable schools like from 21 to 13. So overall, we are seeing about a 40%, probably 40% decrease in year one, number of racially identifiable schools. And then Director Ins, the number, Anderson's technical language first we funded at 295 in the spring, and they ended up with 360 students. So, you know, families were coming up, and I think obviously impacting all these numbers that we're considering, that was the additional requirement of a protection that's mentioned. I'm not exactly sure, but yeah, we're very positive.
Thank you. That was, that's really just a stunning, stunning decrease in numbers, so thank you.
Thank you. Director Jordaine?
Hi, thank you, Chair Ellison. Two quick things before we take a time. One is online learning program. I know it's been proven to be very popular. Have we begun the discussion of bolstering that program in the spring semester when we come back from Halloween in terms of adding more staff for our online program, which is pretty popular? I know I did speak to enrollment, Placement Office, and they are over capacity at 200, but I couldn't get the breakdown of what the grades look like, like was there a longer waiting list for fifth grade, or is there a longer waiting list for ninth grade? And then how, how we're going about trying to increase staff, because it is a popular program. And I know you had said, or someone had spoken to it, that we have parents that are choosing an online program, whether it's us or Elsef. So I'm just interested to see if we have done those talks and discussions. And I'm aware that if it comes down to it, we would have to take teachers out of this classroom, if I'm not mistaken, or correct me if I'm wrong. But that's one thing I'd like to see, is just some type of bolstering of our online program, because it is incredibly popular. If we have a waitlist, we're losing families to, to other places that do have, that do have the space. And then really, so that's more of a comment. And then the other thing really quickly, when we're talking about our academic, academics, and I know it's a really long laundry list, so thanks for that information, Dr. Fearing, but I would have liked to have seen something about where we're at with our math curriculum, you know, updating that, and also to our literacy, where are we at with our K3 literacy for our students? Because we already have little disparities, and I know everyone in this room knows that the pandemic has exacerbated that. But in reality, I mean, we can only blame the pandemic for so long before we actually have to do something. And, and, and I know we are, but I would have liked to have just seen something. So if anyone has a quick little comment or blurb on where we're at with literacy, where we're at with, what was the other one? Math curriculum, yeah. So with that, I'm done, thank you.
Director Jordaine, if I could just very quickly acknowledge the two comments you made. One was around the online, and I know that this is something that has come up, it came up this evening in some of the comments as well, and I know it's a discussion that we've had over the last several months, that the ongoing challenge we have is around our workforce shortage. And so the idea of saying we need to fill positions or we need to have positions in the district, we, we recognize that right now we have vacancies that we are unable to fill. And so creating more positions wouldn't necessarily solve for what those concerns are. We have had a discussion around our online programming. As you noted, we did make changes as we do our staffing adjustments. We had a number of schools that are below what the enrollment projection was. And rather than reducing our number of staff, we made the conscious decision to keep the staffing levels, even though our enrollment is down close to 1,000 students. And we made those adjustments as early as we could to move teachers into an online program. So we're able to meet some of those needs, but to your point, at this point, we're not necessarily feeling like it would be in the best interest of, of our students in the school to, again, shift those classes to an online, or shift the teacher to an online class. But we are having conversations about what flexibility is possible, not only for the rest of this school year with accessing educators to serve online, but what would that need to look like for next year? So we'll have a much better understanding going into next school year. Again, we, we made these projections based off of intuition, you know, because we were operating a 912 online, and then we expanded it to K12 with full services from special education, EL, all of our arts and physical education. So definitely something we're still working to analyze, but I wanted to make that point about just the overwhelming shortage of workforce and staff. The second thing around academics, in particular literacy and mathematics, we do have, we talked about it today, we do have a presentation coming up at our Committee of the Whole meeting where we are going to spend time on that, explaining it's part of our secondary, academic secondary update. But we do have a dedicated portion to that to, to update the board and the public around our work around literacy as well as mathematics. So I don't know, Dr. Fearing, if there was anything beyond that, but I'll let you share if you'd like.
So thank you, Director Jordaine, for the question. As Superintendent alluded, we will be spending most of the November 23 Committee of the Whole. We'll have literacy and math with an update on the MPS literacy plan, et cetera. But as tied to the CDD with the reallocation of resources, we were able to hire K2 literacy coaches for every single one of our buildings. So last year, we only had them at title sites. This year, we have them at all of our K5 sites. That's one example. We were able to maintain our differentiation specialists who are working with, particularly with grades 3, 5. So we have onsite job and bed coaching for all of our grade levels, K5. We were also able to move forward and accelerate our intervention professional development. That's with Press that, well, you'll hear more about on the 23rd. But also, I'll give more information on the 23rd about our partnership with Groves. So we were able to accelerate and expand to having a partnership with them that impacts 36 classrooms. So originally, we only had three schools with a few, three schools with a few classrooms, but we were able to, this year, already expand to 36 classrooms across the city. So those are just a few examples of how we were able to use the reallocated resources, but we'll give more information on the 23rd.
And if I could also just add briefly, Chair Ellison, one of the conversations that we're going to lean into this evening is around our strategic plan. And we won't probably go into significant detail today, but as, as part of the work around a strategic plan, you know, we obviously have strategies, we'll have metrics we'll talk about, and then those, what are those measures that we're going to want to have, the target measures? And a big component of any target measure that you set, you have to understand what the conditions need to be for that success. So we'll certainly share a few examples this evening, but at our next, our next meeting when we want to finalize our strategic plan, it'll be really important for our board to kind of commit and identify what those expectations of conditions need to look like. And we'll talk about that. Is it a 90-minute reading block and a, you know, a 70-minute math block that we need to have in order for us to achieve success? And if it is, then we all have to agree that that's a priority, and that will be our commitment going forward. So some of those things, like I said, are, that you heard about here tonight in the comprehensive district design, are very well aligned to our strategic plan. So I think it's all coming together at a critical time and moment for, for this discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Senior Officer Karen DeVet if she can tell me about any capital improvement
Thank you, Director Ali, for the question. Heritage and its location into Wilder, we do have capital funding identified to continue that space update as Heritage moved into Wilder. We completed a number of projects over last summer, and I can, you know, follow. And I can, you know, follow up later with the specifics of that. But we also have funding for Karen, safe and welcoming entrance in the upcoming capital plan that will be coming forward and a few other items.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Alameen.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of questions too for Karen as well, and then around the professional development. One being with the north and the CET improvement. The contractors and the information that you mentioned actually coming to an end, I think you said, next week? Or is it opening as far as the process of contractors being selected? And I guess I was wondering how was that shared? And how are we trying to give Black contractors an opportunity to be a part of that process?
Yes, thank you, Director Alameen. The RFP is currently posted on our procurement website and through the capital planning group. So it is going forward as a best value contract. And that's a particular contracting method that is often used when you want to get your contractor onboard during the design portion of the project so that they can help inform design versus coming in as a general contractor. So those bids are due at the end of next week. And it is, has been publicly posted. There'll be additional opportunities for contractors or subcontractors as we move forward with construction as well. But this is really moving from strictly having an architect consultant onboard, which for this project, we used LSE, which is a minority-owned business here, based on the north side. And then as we move forward, bringing on that best value contractor to help with construction documents and then the construction bidding that will come subsequent to that best value contract being awarded.
And then also, I had the opportunity of visiting Hall actually today. And so they were very excited about the observatory, the different things that are taking place over there. But once again, one of the concerns is being the links and the outdoor gym that they're going to be doing outside. And that area being so wide open, that it's still an issue with sharing that site with, I mean, the city, basically. And how do we keep it safe for our children in that area? And then also, I was made aware that we still have sand. And like, I mean, sand and the sandboxes. So we're dealing with a lot of the needles and drugs and, you know, all those things still being on school site. So as we talk about, you know, the improvement and doing all these big, big necessary things for our school, I also want us to remember the little things that needs to be done as far as the safety and making sure that our schools, I mean, sand. I was just, I didn't think any of our schools still had sandboxes. But I guess I'm learning as I go, because again, the safety measures that come with that. So if there's any way that we could just make sure, again, that it's part of the planning and as we're trying to do things within our neighborhood. And then the other was the professional development piece. Again, Hall has become, you know, the STEM. And we're talking about doing this observatory, making sure that our staff is prepared for that. Are we, this training, will it be required? Or is it more optional? How do we make sure that, again, we are equipped in our teachers and staff to be prepared for the things that we're asking?
Yeah, thanks for the question. We actually started our professional development for magnet schools back last year during winter and spring. We had to do some fast changing because it had to become virtual, of course. But we got a head start last spring. And then there were opportunities available during the summer. And then really working with our building leaders to establish a schedule where all their staff can get the training that's necessary. We did have some staff that were already very well-versed in the theme magnet, in the magnet theme. And so they chose to go to those schools because of that. So really embracing our teacher leaders who already have a lot of those skillsets and knowledge. Every magnet school also has a magnet coordinator. It's a teacher on special assignment. So they were hired very specifically to do a lot of that curriculum integration and the onsite professional development. So that has already been, already been going on since last spring. And these staff were teachers, but they were also leaders in that thematic area. And so they've been working with the staff already in that area. I would say specific to what Hall will get with the observatory, that's actually really exciting, professional development, because the teachers will see how that can be integrated into the curriculum. But we wanted the observatory to also be used by Franklin students, because it's right next door. And so being able to have those teachers also engage in what the observatory can bring, the lessons that can be created and how that can be integrated into classroom assignments, especially in the science content area. So that will be in development in conjunction with it being built at Hall.
And so is it required or optional for the staff?
The teachers will probably be required. And I say probably because, again, you might have some teachers that are walking in there that already understand and have knowledge of worked in the school or a system that's had an observatory. So I think really what will depend on is our magnet coordinators that are at Franklin and at Hall to take kind of a temperature of the staff there, about how much do they know about having an observatory? What else do you need to know? Do you need to see model lessons? Should we write some lessons in curriculum together? So we want to make sure that the staff all have the knowledge and the skillsets. Some are coming in having that and some are brand new. So we want to make sure that we differentiate the professional development. But it should be an expectation that if you're teaching at those schools, you at least know about it. You know how to integrate it into your lessons and you're utilizing it. That's the most important piece.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Director Caprini.
Thank you. Executive Director Cox. Thank you. Oh, I'll let you guys do the move around. Musical chairs. We should play some music while you move around. So first, welcome. I think this is, well, it's my first time having you present, unless you presented on my birthday where I wasn't here. But welcome. And thank you for your presentation. Very excited about the work going forward with community engagement. I know that in the last three years, two years, it's been rough to be able to actually be out there and be present to the community and like, you know, make sure that we're out there letting people know what we're doing. So I'm excited about the work that you're going to be doing in the future, specifically with our younger, families with younger, younger children. I also, you brought up a housing crisis. We are in a housing crisis. And I would say even more so on the north side. But it's exciting to see that there's quite a bit of development that is happening. On Glenwood Avenue, there is, gosh, I don't, I think there may be over 100 units that are being built on a, no, actually, I think it's, it's also Memorial Highway. And then also on Broadway Avenue, there is quite a bit of housing that's being built. So it's really exciting that, you know, some of these places may even be finished within the next year and a half or two. So it's definitely an opportunity to really, you know, get out there and engage with those families that I'm sure will be moving into some of those units. And then, I'm not sure if it was you that brought up ethnic studies, or was it? You're back on. I can't tell you how exciting it is to see where this has gotten to. I mean, since what, 2013? When we first started trying to get ethnic studies, even people to pay attention to letting ethnic studies become a graduation requirement. It's just amazing to me to see that that's actually something that's, we're doing it. We're literally doing it. So that's, I love that. And then there was one other thing, the professional development that you mentioned. Never Whisper for Justice. Can you send that to me?
Sure. So they partner with the Front Lines of Justice that you saw on the slides. So the Never Whisper for Justice is a media production. And they're focused fully on social justice and professional development, creating engaging multimedia videos, et cetera, that help support professional development. So they partnered with Front Lines of Justice and developed this module. And it's really, when I went through it, I participated in the first cohort, which was last year. So there's a lot of things that you can do on your own. But it's just multiple ways to learn the content, to see videos. And they're just done in a very professional way. And so they've partnered together. And I know that Chad, who is my contact from Never Whisper Justice, he's actually very interested in coming to Minneapolis and doing a set on the work that we're doing with culturally sustaining pedagogy. Because he's national and does his work through media productions. And he's just really honed in on what we're doing in Minneapolis. And so that's work that we're in development as well.
Okay, that's awesome. And the reason I ask is because I think in the, going forward, it would be great for us as board directors to be able to actually have presentations from folks that are presenting that kind of PD to our staff. Because it gives, well, I'll just speak for myself. It could give me the opportunity to see how that work is developing and where it's happening. Because we're finally at a place now where we can start to visit our schools again, right? So that's the only reason why was like, I'm just naturally interested in some of the professional development that teachers have. Not all of it, but some of it. Just to see where it aligns with the different work that we have, we're expecting them to do. And it would be good information. I'd like to learn it too, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll include some links in the board update. And then I'll also make sure that you have, you're able to see kind of the whole set. You won't have access into it because you have to be a registered participant. But that is something we can explore too, is doing kind of like a limited way that you can get in and see all the content and see what our staff are doing. But when we did our exit survey in the spring, which was about 500 educators, it was very, very highly marked as being successful. And it was a good balance of them having that personal space to wrestle with some of those things, but also being able to have critical conversations about what it means to work in this district and serving the students and communities. So that is why we chose to go with them again this fall.
No, that's great. I appreciate it. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Saria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions and some comments. And I want to take the opportunity to like educate all of us into something that might not be very important to some individuals. But using the word Latinx, we need to evolve to a higher level to using Latin A. It is more inclusive to LGBTQ+ community members. You know, I do a lot of work with young people. And you know, it's how we all operate differently according to our generation. So that's something that I was educated on. And I would like, you know, to share that with you as well so that we can, you know, be up to date, you know, with our young people. That's one thing. Also, the five schools participating in the Artistic, Artisan Residence Pilot Program, what are those schools?
Thanks for the question. Are you referring to ethnic studies?
No, the Artisan Residence Pilot Program.
Yeah, I think that was in reference to ethnic studies.
Oh, okay. Beautiful. I was a little bit confused. Thank you.
Let me see. You know, I'll have to get back to you with the actual school names. But I can tell you that the Artisan Residence Pilot Program is with the Rojo Collective. So there'll be an art show at the end of the school. You're highlighting the variety of art. So it's photography on identity, collages, and murals related to resistance and resilience that's been created by students. But I'll have to get back to you which schools, but that's the number that's participating with this group.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Also, the Southwest Partnership with MPS Radio to create the podcast. That's amazing. And I just wanted to like, you know, give a few comments on that. So like, who's mentoring these students? For future reference, it will be like a great opportunity to expand this, to have these programs in different languages so that we can reach out to our families as well. So who's mentoring these students? Like, what's the process of, like, who's guiding them?
So these would be the ethnic study teachers. But that's also good feedback that I can give to our district ethnic studies leads who work with that and how to expand it past what they're doing just in those certain classrooms.
Okay. Okay, and I'm going to go back to enrollment. So we mentioned like, so the decrease, you know, of enrollment. And I know that we talked about this before, but I don't remember the specifics. We didn't do a survey, you know, for the families that actually left the district, right? We didn't track that data? Like, what was the reason? Or what were the reasons beyond what is listed in here of them leaving the district?
Director Saria, I actually can't answer how recently we've done exit interviews. But I do know that I've had conversations with the current enrollment director about bringing that back. But perhaps one of my colleagues can, since I'm so new to the districts, perhaps someone can say how recently we've done exit surveys, exit interviews.
Director Saria, thank you for the question. Executive Director Cox, I'm having a vision of a brief conversation we had during remote status of things where we were talking about just a small sample number of exit follow-up that we had done. Executive Director Martina was here at the time. And I'm sure we can get it because it was part of a board presentation that was made here. But it was just a very targeted number. And I don't remember exactly the date or the time, but I can look with staff to see if we can pull that as part of our presentation that was made to the board. It was a very limited number because it was during the pandemic and we were wanting to get some general understanding of those transitions that families were making.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification because I feel like, you know, we cannot deny the fact that, you know, some of the reasons that are very real, specifically to my community, are not listed in here. And as we move forward as a district, we need to acknowledge and recognize also the failures so that we can like be very honest to our community members and just accept the fact. And it is what it is. And it can be better, and it will be better. One last thing regarding the resources and the materials for the diverse texts included in the classroom, libraries, the media centers. That's really, really good. I'm so happy to hear about this. But I want to bring up the point, like, what about like some schools that don't have a media center? Like the reality of Wellstone.
Thanks for the question. All of our sites do have access to these texts. We went through actually last year, since we were in distance learning and we did not have people in our buildings, we went through and started weeding through the collections of our libraries and our media centers. We do know that we have sites that do not have a licensed library and media specialist. And so the opportunity for our students to be in the library and media is really based on whether they have a staff through support, like an associate educator who can run students through that process, or the licensed classroom teacher to take them down there and have them go through the process of looking for books and selecting books or other material. I know Wellstone has a smaller scale library than perhaps they had when they were in the Wilder building. But I was there the other day and was able to look through the collection. We also have visited sites like Harrison and other sites that we wanted to make sure that their students had access to text, but text that the students wanted to read and if they had any suggestions. So our district library and media specialist has been working through every single school to ensure that it's not just, here's a, here's a whole bunch of books, use them, but more like what fits the needs of your site? What do your students want to read? What are teachers wanting to utilize as part of their curriculum? But, so we did start that work. I think it was about $1.2 million that we put toward buying brand-new collections. And again, these are really focused on diverse collections. And then also bringing in new books of books that were very much loved and used at our sites. But we wanted our students to have new copies of those books. So it's an ongoing process, Dr. Saria. So of course, if there is a school that is in need of different materials or they haven't gotten the right amount, I'll let me know and we'll connect with that school and get that fixed.
Thank you. And I want to welcome you as well. Bienvenida. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for, Directors, for all those questions. Thank you, staff, for that wonderful presentation. Superintendent, if you can go ahead with your next item.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. I'm pleased to introduce our next item, which will be before the board for vote next month. This is the updated before the board for vote next month. This is the updated memorandum of agreement with the Metro Urban Indian Educators. So I'll ask Executive Director Jennifer Simon to come forward and as she's doing that, I just want to give some background context. MPS and Metro, excuse me, MPS and our Metro Urban Indian Directors have a long history of formal partnership with the first version of this memorandum of agreement being signed in 2016 or 2006. At the time, the agreement was believed to be the first of its kind in the United States and it really does, it outlines the mutual commitment and responsibility of our district and the American Indian community as represented by MUD to work together to dramatically improve outcomes for our American Indian students. And since this first agreement, we've, we've learned a lot through the partnership. And if you, some of you might have been around in the very first agreement and I know that Director Simon has been working on updating it and we continue to go back to look at the old one and say, oh my goodness, look how far we've come with it. But, you know, through the partnership, the subsequent iterations were, were updated accordingly and we really have done a lot in learning from, from this work. The past two agreements, which were signed in 2012 and 2016 respectively, did increase the level of specificity around, from what was in the first agreement. I think we added the subcommittees to assess, to assist in the agreement development, to include strategies, metrics, and really establishing what we refer to as the best practice site model that is in place today. So that brings us here to the fourth version of the MOA and would like to once again introduce to the board our Indian Education Department Director Jennifer Simon to provide an overview of the process that we used and to maybe highlight just some of the new elements of the, the new agreement that the board can anticipate seeing at our next board meeting. So please go ahead, Director Simon.
Thank you. Metakia pi empetuash de. Greetings to you all, my relatives. Good day. It's been a long process in addition to having it during a pandemic. Obviously, it was extended for a year. It was nice that we had a collective presentation of individuals from the community, from our board, from Minneapolis Public Schools, staff members and senior officers, associate superintendents, as well as parents. One of the things we did this year is actually offered stipends to parents to be involved in the process to compensate just minimally for the time because of the importance of having them at the table in addition to students. And so I start by that by just naming that it was a collective process of Mud Pie, the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors, and Phillips Indian Educators as the subcommittee, but also very involved with Minneapolis Public Schools with, with changeover of staff, including myself, and just bringing the awareness about the memorandum of agreement to the larger community, but also within Minneapolis Public Schools. And so I first named that and just appreciate the process that was all involved and the people that were involved. The highlights for this new MOA that are a little bit different is first off, just the process of having an implementation plan as part of it. So the MOA is a, you know, 30-page document. The previous one was really long, but it didn't have the specificity of who does what. So what's responsibility of human resources? What's the responsibility of my department? What's the responsibility of the community of Mud Pie and to our, when we talk about the mutual partnership? And so that's named in this. You will see that within the six, first six months of signature, that an implementation plan will be required to go along with it. And that will be specific to naming the responsibilities of everyone involved, which is the entire community, including our, our American Indian community and Minneapolis Public Schools. The second is just a review around with the CDD implementation and just noting that the CDD changed some things specific to the previous MOA. For example, our Little Earth community that has about 300 of our American Indian identified students within it was previously attendant, the attendance boundary was at Sanford Middle School. The change this, with the CDD moves the attendance boundary to Anderson. So that's just an example. So one of the named within the implementation plan is that it be reviewed, a full review within two years, but really monitoring it year to year. The third, we're keeping the metrics as the same. The metrics in the previous MOA were attendance, academic outcomes, and campus climate or school climate and feelings of our families. We're keeping those, but we're doing more disaggregated data specific to the American Indian community. We have a high population of our students identified in special education, for example, almost 30, 37% of our students. And so monitoring that more specifically of disaggregated data of attendance, of academic outcomes, of the feelings of students within, so doing that disaggregated data. The baseline data that we're using to start and implement our goals within the implementation plan are going to be current year. So that's one of the things. We didn't want to go back two years necessarily with having old data and we didn't want to use only the data of the pandemic and during the pandemic of online learning because that was very challenging for our American Indian community, for all of our students, but specifically for our American Indian students. And so we're using the baseline data of now. So for example, FAS scores just came out, or we just assess for fall FAS scores. We will also be doing a fall, a winter FAS score and then MCA test will be our spring. So really following it throughout the year, not just looking at MCA scores, that that was a previous indicator of the previous MOA. And lastly, the data point that we had in the previous MOA around SIP goal, School Improvement Plan, was specific to American Indian populations, for example, of increasing, increasing attendance at school site was within a school improvement plan. The note within the new MOA number four is that school sites will have an individualized goal for each of their American Indian students. So regardless if they have one American Indian student or 250 American Indian students, that there's a specific goal and outcome for each of those identified American Indian students. And so that replaces the SIP piece within the previous MOA. So that's a highlight of the changes that you will find within the previous MOA to the MOA number three to MOA number four.
Thank you. Thank you. Directors, any questions do you have about the MOA? This will come before us next month for a vote. So, thank you very much.
We'll be lucky.
Next, we're going to continue our conversation on the strategic plan. Directors, Superintendent Graff and his team share first about the options as we requested on how the vision and mission language might be modified. Please think about your preferences as I will be asking you for your input tonight so that we can get the board's feedback on this. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Ellison. So I'm going to ask Senior Officer Moore to, to come forward and walk through the options that we had discussed at our last meeting, along with a few other items to quickly re-ground us as to where we are in the process. And then, once, once he does that and we get clarity and direction from the board, we'll hopefully then move into the recommended measures for that discussion as well tonight. So with that, Senior Officer Moore, please go ahead with the vision and mission options.
I'm back. So Chair Ellison, Superintendent, members of the board, really looking forward to having a conversation on strategic plan, follow-up conversation. And I think what's really interesting about strategic plans is that, is that they're, they're critically important because I think these are obviously documents regarding values. As the superintendent mentioned, one of the areas that we don't pay attention to, I think enough, and this is across the nation, is we spend a lot of time on goals. You do see some discussion on strategies, you know, measures, but as we come back at a later point, those conditions that may get in the way of the strategies being implemented become critical. And those conditions really impact the type of targets that you set. So tonight, we're not going to engage specifically in numerical targets, but we will take a look at measures. So we'll take a look at the mission and vision, then we'll have a chance to look at the metrics and next steps. Just as a reminder, I mean, we had a strategic planning process led by the board in which you're identifying three foundational pieces. You want to honor the voices of the folks that, that you are charged to represent.
We have years and years of data.
We have years and years of data. And so we know, engagement over the number of years, over 10,000 voices.
What our community members want in there is 300-page document. I think you also reviewed.
With just a ton of data.
Incorporating plans, reports, and then focus on implementation.
We also point out that we have values that guide our work. And so this is representative of a climate framework, numerous engagement around equity representation, anti-racism, the physical, emotional safety and wellbeing, relationship trust and communication.
Communication.
Shared decision-making and voice. We have metrics. We have these conversations particularly to support transparency and accountability. And then we also have one particular piece of evidence-based strategies, wanting to make sure that the work that we do is guided by research, that it gives us the best opportunity to be successful as we engage in strategies. And it also helps guide metrics. And as we look at what other school districts are doing, it does influence the, the work that we want to do. Also keeping in mind that, it goes without saying that as a school board, the, the courage that, that as a, as a community we have on shown regarding adopting the Conference of District Design. And that was a deliberate approach to take a look at our current structure to see the extent to which it served all students. We recognize that our system does not serve our students of color equally, that this is a very high achieving district for certain populations, white, middle income populations.
But that there was deliberate work that we need to do regarding our students of color.
Students who speak multiple languages.
Those who follow our special education. So this is a plan that also reflects and you'll see that in the metrics.
Want to highlight quickly a partnership with the University of Minnesota that's supporting the evidence-based strategies. And I think it's particularly relevant regarding metrics. We, we have the, the fortune, we're very fortunate to have one of the top universities in the United States literally miles away. And one of the things that we haven't done enough is we haven't been deliberate in engaging that partner, University of Minnesota, in this sense, the College of Education, Human Development, in the best practices, the ideas that they're exploring. We also haven't been deliberate enough, I believe, in influencing the type of research that they're doing. That is that they want to support us. We have problems, challenges that we identify, and so they're ready to lean in and also support us and have their research aligned to, in this case, our strategic plan. So it's very exciting. We're very fortunate to have Dean Michael Rodriguez, who formerly did some work with us as a district. He's been a strong partner, formerly was endowed chair regarding the achievement gap. We have shared values and alignment. And so we are moving forward with a, with a extensive partnership and we're focusing on four areas: literacy, math, climate, and teacher of color recruitment and retention. And so each of those sessions, we will bring staff from the district, meeting with university professors in those areas, and we'll just exchange ideas. And we will challenge each other. I think that's part of this climate framework, is having the vulnerability to challenge each other and push each other, both the university side, but also the practitioner side. And so very exciting to share, raise awareness of current research findings. We want our students, teachers, staff to drive, in many cases, the research agenda of the University of Minnesota. So we want to strengthen that relationship. Obviously discuss potential implications of things that they're doing. Sometimes we're so embroiled in the day-to-day that we don't have a space to reflect upon what we can do better. So as the superintendent has mentioned in previous conversations, as we move to be, become a learning organization, having those university professors push us and us push them, certainly will, will support our students and family in the district. And then they're also going to support us with implementation science. And so one of the things we've heard from the board as well is that we do a really strong job with our goals and our strategies, but, but the crux of the work in order to, to make change outcomes for our students is implementation. And so they're going to partner with us to support effective implementation around the areas of our work around literacy, math, climate, as well as the teacher recruitment and retention. And so we actually had our first, we actually had our first session last Friday and engaged with university professors around the, the topic of literacy. Next steps will be we'll work together, develop and work plans, identify areas in which we have alignment. And it's just the beginning of, I think, a, a very authentic relationship. And so you see here, the four areas.
Here, the four areas.
And of course, you see this aligning to the goals and strategic plan. So the goal, as mentioned, is always as we're moving forward, to align our work to the strategic plan. And so you see the areas we selected, literacy, math, goal one, school climate, two and four, teacher recruitment and retention, goal three. That's going to guide our work moving forward. So I just wanted to let you know about that opportunity. You'll hear a bit more moving forward. I think you can expect to see university professors here. My hope is that we're going to see some shared presentations between staff and, and here and the university. Want to pull in our principals and also have them engage. So it's just a very exciting opportunity for us and for them, I would add. And so look forward to an opportunity to have our university folks, partners, come forward and say hi. But it is a long-term relationship that we're going to have moving forward. So I want to jump into the mission and values and, and share the first iteration, draft one. We've talked that all students, regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs, receive a well-rounded education that prepares them for future success. Received feedback from you as a, as a school board, there seem to be a lot of positive feelings regarding this, this draft vision statement developed from your words at the retreat. But there was a desire, again, to explicitly call out anti-racism. And so we want to say that they're receiving an anti-racist, that's the change in red, well-rounded education that prepares them for future success. So that becomes two ways. So we had a former, the first draft did not have anti-racist in the language. There was also a desire to call out, what, what does well-rounded education mean? And you see it means quite a bit. And I, and I think, but I think that was intentional. This is Essor, this is a federal language. And you see essential knowledge, this is what's identified as a well-rounded education, reading, language arts, yes, we know that, writing, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, languages, civics and government, economics, geography, history, computer science, music. Many of the elements regarding the Conference of District Design, we said that we embarked on the journey through the Conference of District Design of offering a well-rounded education regardless of zip code. This is what we mean. And I think Dr. Ferring did a phenomenal job tonight sharing examples of well-rounded education. But if we actually spelled it out, it is quite a bit. And so, but we wanted to offer that to you because that was one of the offerings is can you spell that out in a document? So you see the anti-racist version two and the spelling out of a well-rounded education. So that, those are the changes per board feedback regarding the vision. The mission, we began a process saying that Minneapolis Public Schools exist to provide a high-quality, culturally responsive education for every Minneapolis student. Can we add at the language per board feedback of anti-racist? That was something that aligns strongly with our policy 1304. It explicitly calls out anti-racism, calls out action. As a school board, you, you felt very passionately that our school staff as a district, we should actively address systems that are oppressive, racist, and I would say extending to other groups, sexist, homophobic, et cetera. It was anti-racist, culturally responsive education for every Minneapolis student. So you see the anti-racist added, that language added to the mission, and that is a primary change. And so, you know, Minneapolis graduate, that has stayed the same. But at this point, I think the direction is for the board to, to discuss changes, provide feedback on iteration two of the, both the vision and the mission. Superintendent, I don't know. Superintendent, I don't know if you have any other comments.
Directors, Superintendent speaks, think about your choice and then hit your request to speak when you're ready to give some input. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Ellison, thank you Senior Officer Moore for that background and expanding on what we talked about as well as for highlighting the potential partnership. One thing I will note to the board, and I apologize that this was an oversight. I think if the board does select a version of the vision that expands out well-rounded, I would suggest a technical change where we have noted foreign language to adjusting up to say world language. And so I think that was, again, probably pulled from a document of the federal. Yeah, but I think it does, you know, to Director Sario's point earlier this evening about how we have to update our language with things, I think that was just a complete oversight and taken from the federal language. So that would be one consideration I would offer as a technical amendment. More so, again, if the board does choose to have that expansion of well-rounded being part of the vision. Thank you, Chair Ellison.
Thank you. All right, directors, do you want to start with the vision? So we've got the first version, which is what the staff presented to us at our retreat. All students, regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs, will receive a well-rounded education that prepares them for future success. Version two A, which includes an anti-racist education, or version two B, which spells out what well-rounded education looks like. Director Arnison?
I prefer two A.
Director Sario?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and like always, someone asked for clarification. So are we giving our light support to one, two, or three? Because I'm not okay with any of them.
So we're looking at the vision, and yes, do you like the first version, which staff presented to us at our retreat, but then we gave feedback and we said we wanted something more?
Yes, okay.
So we do want to add the anti-racist?
Thank you. No, I'm going to go back into like since our retreat, I said this specifically when it comes to translation in Spanish, well-rounded education, and maybe one of the interpreters can help me here because I'm just a little lost. And I, as Director Ciara as well, if this board translates in Somali. In Spanish, it means nothing. Una educación redonda, it makes totally like no sense whatsoever. And we need to be very, very mindful into what is the vision that we are embarking on. So I do have a big problem with that not being considered in the translation.
So do you like the two B, which then tells us what, would you be able to translate that builds essential knowledge in English, reading, or?
Once again, Madam Chair, well-rounded does not exist in Spanish. Una educación redonda is like a, it's like a ball, like a peglota, it makes no sense.
Are you suggesting that we alter two B, where we can say, we'll receive an anti-racist education that builds essential knowledge in English, reading, or language arts, world language, writing, science?
I will feel a little more comfortable, and just to add one more thing, when Senior Officer Moore, you acknowledged the fact that we're not serving BIPOC students, how do we feel about like naming that specifically in this vision? Just putting this out to the board for a discussion as well.
Could you give us a statement that we could then consider?
Yes, instead of saying all students, to be specific, BIPOC students, regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs, will receive an anti-racist, excellent education, something like that.
Director Arnison?
I have a question on that, I wonder if we can get some legal input on that, on that request.
While we're getting that director element, because it's probably tied to this conversation.
I mean, that was my concern too as well, the well-roundedness, I think we talked about that last time when it was brought before us, that it's just too open. And if we're trying to be intentional and more direct, we need to make sure that our language spells it out just more with more clarity. And then also just after listening to the public comments and just hearing from our parents and stuff tonight, wanting to have more of the BIPOC and intersectional identities as part of the statement, seeing how we can have conversation around that too as well.
Okay, so there was a, could we get some legal clarification on whether we can?
Chair Ellison, if I may, just see if we can have General Counsel Moore, if you're connected with us virtually, if you could kind of weigh in on the question at hand. And I think what I understand is that Board Director made the suggestion that instead of having all students, regardless of their background, it said, and I'll expand on the acronym out of respect for some of our staff in here, Black, Indigenous, people of color, regardless of their backgrounds, zip code, and personal needs, was specifically what the, I understand the request to be. So just looking for General Counsel Moore, if you could give some guidance on the feasibility of having that in this version of the vision statement.
Absolutely, Superintendent, Chair Ellison, and Directors. By statute, Minneapolis Public Schools is required to serve all students. And I believe that is what is reflected in there. If Directors, you wanted to have a particular concentration that acknowledges the disparity and the need to concentrate potentially extra resources, that would be certainly something that would be supported.
Okay, so Directors, what do you? Director Ins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just have a question for Director Sario. And I'm sorry, like my screen is not showing this language and it's just, I have to kind of look, I've been cheating off of you, Director Caprini. But if instead of well-rounded, there was another term that we could use that did translate, like holistic, for example, if there's something we might want to consider, rather than well-rounded, that would be something that would be workable in other world languages, that might be a better term that's less idiomatic, you know, less sort of idiosyncratic to our culture or language. So we might want to consider that.
We might want to consider that. So I don't know if staff, I know we put a lot of work into this stuff, and I know that this is always difficult work when we
Get down to it and we have to decide what, I've worked on some of these visions and missions before, and I know it can be sticky, but I think it's important to get it right.
But I think it's important to get it right, so I don't know if that's a possibility.
It's a question, yeah, it's a question. I mean, is that, are we looking for a word that might still convey the same meaning but would also be more cross-cultural or?
I hope so, I mean, that was like the very, I actually was very vocal about it in our retreat.
I don't think your mic is on.
Thank you. I was very vocal in our retreat, and I just don't understand why we just keep not hearing this. It's a very important issue when it comes to our diverse immigrant communities. And I don't know, now I have a question for Director Ciara, does this translate in Somali?
You know, thank you very much. I think what the mission, in other words, it would be great if we used the word like excellent education instead of well-rounded, or in other words, best education. You know, that way it can make more sense. So we can have version two A, where you say we'll receive an anti-racist, excellent education that prepares them for future success. That may be.
So for me, that doesn't really convey the same kind of meaning that well-rounded would convey as holistic or. So that, I think, is not the same term, and it would not substitute effectively. So I don't know, Director Ali, I don't think, I think it's important that we emphasize the whole child and that the language, that language to me is very important. I did have just another comment, Madam Chair, in addition to that question. Just as it stands, I do think it needs to be concise, and to spell out what well-rounded means with this long terminology is, to me, not my preference. So I would prefer the first one with a different term maybe than well-rounded, like holistic or something of that nature.
So Director Sario, do you have a term you would suggest?
I can speak once more now.
I did, okay. I certainly don't want to like move forward without like acknowledging other languages as well, specifically when it comes to Somali, Mung, I mean, we have the interpreters in here. You know, for me, it makes no sense in Spanish, and I can make these recommendations, but I was very vocal since the retreat, and I feel that I was not heard at all. And I mentioned this to you specifically and to others as well. So if we are moving forward, this is more than just the language. But if we are starting, if that's the starting point, we need to do it in a way that makes sense to our communities. And specifically, en español, no hace sentido, it makes no sense.
So I'm looking for a word that might make sense from you.
And Director Ins, you said that Director Ciara's recommendation, you were not okay with that?
No, that, to me, excelente is not the same thing as holistic or.
Holistic, it doesn't make sense in Spanish either.
So I'm just looking for, I'll let you think about it, because I've got other people who want to talk, but what would make sense to describe what it is we're trying to say in this mission statement? Director Caprini?
Thank you. I completely respect what you're saying in terms of why it doesn't make sense. My husband is from Italy, so there are definitely translations that when I say something in Italian and he tells me what I said, I'm like, oh my God, I said that in front of your mother. And it's frightening, you know.
You know, so I totally understand.
Oops. But we've, we as a board, we've discussed this at our retreat, and, you know, we've had opportunities to, you know, have these versions sent to us. And, you know, I myself am perfectly fine with not using the term well-rounded education. As I said, I completely understand what you're saying, being married to a man who speaks another language. And no, I don't agree that excellent is a good term to put in there because it doesn't speak to all of the children that we have at NPS and all of the beautiful things that the children bring to us in our schools in terms of their, who they are. So I guess what I'm saying is, I would really need for someone, for you to give me an idea of to what word, because I don't think it's the responsibility of staff, I think it's our responsibility to change that word. And I'm struggling changing it. So I'm willing to be here for a while to figure out what word is going to work. Otherwise, I'm willing to say, okay, this isn't going to happen tonight. And that, this is not to rush, I'm not done talking, this is not to rush the situation, it's just our responsibility as a board. This is our vision for the district. So I just don't think it's, they shouldn't be telling us what the vision is, because that's our responsibility. So I think maybe perhaps each of us could, we could go down the line, maybe perhaps Chair?
Possibly, I could throw out some terms that might fit.
Thank you.
Comprehensive education, a well-balanced education. I mean, and I'm looking to those who speak other languages to see, does that translate? And what I'm hearing is that people don't like the longer drawn-out. And so we're looking at version two A, where we would say, all students, regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs, will receive an anti-racist education. But we're looking for a term. Yes, Director Sario?
Dawn, so I was very vocal. I was very vocal. And I brought this up to you, Senior Officer Moore, and although it's not your responsibility, I made it very clear, you know, to like that this was not okay. So I was not aware that it is up to me now to come up with proposals, right? I'm not done speaking. So to your point, Madam Chair, we can like, you know, if you can provide some recommendations because you do have some knowledge of Spanish, that, you know, it will make more sense. And even having our interpreters in here, we can take advantage of that. In the sense of like this word, I might be just like, you know, operating from a base that makes no sense to some people. But to my community, this is something that doesn't settle well with me. And I am the representative, for the first time, of the immigrant community that speaks Spanish. So I do have a big responsibility on my shoulders.
So does comprehensive work? How do we feel? Director Ciara?
Yeah, I think we can, Madam Chair, we can revisit again the issue. I honestly speaking, when you write things in English, I get it, what it means to say well-rounded child, well-rounded education. But again, as my colleagues say, that it doesn't make sense in Spanish. And we have a significant number of Latina students in our system. I think it's very important that we have to come up with another English word that makes more sense for this community, particularly for Latinx community, you know. So, and we have many, we can talk about many things, like, as you said, like comprehensive, you know, balanced, well-balanced, we can have many, many words where we can use. But it's very important that, Director Sario, as you say, the community really has to settle with this.
I hear you, Director Ali. I like comprehensive, and I'm just looking for, we can stay here tonight and figure this out because that's our job, to come up with the vision statement that works for our whole community. If we said that all students will receive an anti-racist, comprehensive education that prepares them for future success? Yes, no?
That makes sense for me.
Director Sario?
I'm not there yet.
Okay, so I've got, so think about it, I've got people who want to talk, so Director Caprini?
So I appreciate the concern about the Latinx community, and I do agree with you. But I don't want to forget that we do have a Mung community, we have Somali community, we have Native American community. So I, if what we're doing is going to solely be figuring out a word to put here that just speaks to one community, I think that's, I think we should be careful about what it is that we're doing then. So I'm not there yet with the word comprehensive either. I still am looking for a word that speaks to the multifacetness of education, of what's possible, the many ages of development of a child, the different communities they live in, and the different perspectives that they bring. And I want, I would like to have a vision. And I want, I would like to have a vision that provides an education that spreads over all of those things, because we are a multicultural urban district. And so, I'm not quite sure what word that is and whether or not we're going to come up with it tonight, but if we can't stay in a center where we are literally lifting all, then I don't know what we're doing, unless we're just pushing back.
Thank you. Director Elamin?
I, I guess I'm, I'm not, I, I'm trying to understand exactly what we're trying to do here. I clearly understand what Director Soria is saying and I don't think she's trying to speak just for her, her own. I think she's speaking for the masses of us all, because I too brought up that same issue about the well-roundedness and trying to figure out, again, how we can be more intentional behind the language that we're using. But also, and I'm still not clear, so, is BIPOC not an option that we can use? Is that what Amy Moore said?
I think she's...
Or is that something that is an option that we can talk about?
General Counsel Moore, if you could again just clarify what you said earlier. I think that Director Elamin has a request to better understand your, your statements around Black Indigenous People of Color language.
By statute, Minneapolis Schools has the obligation to serve all students. If, it's understandable if, you know, based on data that there is a concentration related to BIPOC student populations, that certainly could be worked in, but NPS does serve all students by statute.
So, with that being said, I would like to figure out how we can incorporate it... Incorporate it in. ...with our mission and vision statement.
I get that. And I wasn't, this whole conversation about well-rounded wasn't to dismiss that conversation, I was just trying to cover one at a time, but I'm thinking maybe something like, and think about it, all students, including Black Indigenous, students of color, will receive, regardless of their backgrounds, I mean, just, so we have all students in there, but we include the Black Indigenous People of Color language.
So, I guess I agree. It doesn't sound like we're going to come to anything tonight. Maybe we can allow time for individuals to give some type of recommendation, I don't know, as Chair, but I don't think we're going to come to a consensus tonight. There's, there's a little too much that's on the table for a emotional decision to be made or for a hasty decision to be made, for something that we're looking at to be longevity for our mission and our vision for our district.
Okay. Think about it, because I'd like us to come up with something tonight, because that has other work to do before we can finalize this. As, just a minute, so, let's think about it, maybe we won't, but let's try. Superintendent?
Chair Ellison, thank you. Again, I want to make sure I don't take you off your, your conversation, but just to, to reinforce the, the most recent conversation, which is all students with an emphasis on Black Indigenous People of Color, I mean, something, something related to that. So, we're all students specifically including or specifically related to Black Indigenous People of Color regardless of their backgrounds, zip code, and personal needs. So, I think, again, I'm just trying to offer something that would meet the requirement that we hear about acknowledging that we serve all students and then being more intentional and deliberate, lifting up or emphasizing with emphasis on, on the Black Indigenous People of Color.
Director Caprini?
Oh, thank you, Chair. I, I guess I just want to just ask the question, because I'm sitting here thinking, if there's, there's, it just seems like we're, we're not saying something, and I don't know, I'm just trying to figure it out. Is it against the law, because we serve all students, to, to, to not say all students? I mean, is it against the law to, to say BIPOC? Is, I'm asking a question, because you mentioned the statute and I just want to understand, I don't want to not be able to do something that I feel a certain kind of way about, because I would, but I'm, I'm getting this feeling that you've mentioned the statute and are we setting ourselves up for a lawsuit by saying that that's what, you know, we're serving, we're not, we're not, basically, we're not going to serve all students? I mean, I don't know, I want to, I want to understand.
Do you want to ask?
Because I think about the ADOS and how I've, for, for years, I've heard a particular person talk about how, you know, there's a, there's been a fight for reparations and not being, you know, just, the ADOS people not getting reparations, and that's what's going on in my head when I think about this vision and us being a public institution. So, I'm putting myself out there vulnerably, trying to understand, is, is that what we're saying? Because if that's what we're, if that's what I'm, if that's what the Counsel Moore is saying, then please say it. And if you can't say it because it's against the law, then text it to me.
Chair Ellison, if I may, just again ask General Counsel Moore not to keep bringing you back into the discussion, but I think you heard requests for clarification on what the implications are if we were to maybe not align with statute and eliminate the all-students piece and go a different direction. What's your, what's your legal advice?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent, Director Caprini, and members of the board. If you eliminate all students and specifically only reference particular students, you're not in alignment with our obligation under statute that says that we serve all students. It's understandable to want to point out that there are a group of students, Black Indigenous People of Color, students who have been historically underserved and need additional support or concentration of resources. Does that help, Director Caprini?
Yes, that's quite helpful. You aren't saying, yes, Director Caprini, you're right. What I hear you saying is, it's the law to, it's the, the statute says that we provide an education for all students. And if we don't say it that way, we can certainly adjust it, but the all-student piece has to be a part of it, because that's what we do as a public institution, is we provide an education for all students. So, so I'm understanding that, I kind of think I'm right.
Director Ali?
Thank you very much. Madam Chair. Madam Chair. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we are on the same page of serving all students regardless of their background. Are we on board on this? I'm asking all of you. Because this institution must serve all students, whether they are from China or whether from, you know, elsewhere, regardless of their ethnicity.
State statute says we have to educate all students.
All students, yes.
Yes.
Then, then let's move forward. Yeah. That, the, the fiction statement says, all students regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs. I think this is a really nice, and that, that covers all the students regardless of their background, including white, black, you know, Native Indian, Hispanic...
It does. But do we want to say that?
I think we should say it.
Do we want to say all students, including Black Indigenous?
I, I honestly believe we, we, we can say all students because of, look, when we say all students, blacks also included.
Yes, so you like all students, you like...
I like all students.
I get that.
Yeah. I don't, I don't like, I, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we should say all students including blacks. You know, we're already part of the all students.
We already know that.
All, everyone in this room is all.
Okay.
So, 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 yeah, so that's, that's my, my suggestion. So, let's move forward and, and go back to the second sentence, which will say, we receive an anti-racist, so that, I believe the debate was well-rounded, how best we can change that word to a word that is, you know, compatible with the Latina culture, you know? And, and I think he, the fiction should be short and understandable to everybody.
So, you like the A, the A version, but with the word...
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of well-rounded?
Yes.
But that means well-rounded.
To be honest with you, to be honest with you, even well-rounded works for me.
Well-rounded works.
But because of, but because I want to make sure the community of Latina, you know, I want to make sure that, that there, there's a word that...
Yes, yes.
You know?
Yes.
They understand.
They understand as well. That translates well.
Yeah, yeah, because we've got to hear a director who's saying that, you know, this word, this word is not making sense. So, therefore, we should look another word that can...
I would agree. If you have a word that you would like to recommend, we're open to suggestions, I'm suggesting comprehensive.
It works for me, that word too.
Okay.
Because of its, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. But again, it has to work with...
Yes.
Director Soria.
Yes.
You know?
Right.
Doesn't work for her, then we, we have to go back again.
Yes, we don't want to do that. Director Ince?
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for this important conversation that we're having. And I, I think that, in my experience, this board works best and is most effective when we are in agreement on our, our values and we are able to provide clear direction to the staff of the district. And so, I think this conversation is an important part of that as we move forward and that we have clarity...
And that we have clarity and can be in...
Agreement on what we think is our mission and vision is very, very important. I am in agreement with Director Elamin and that I don't think we are going to get there this evening. So, but I do appreciate the effort and I just wanted to make that statement. I also, to be a buzzkill, I'm not in favor of comprehensive. I feel like that's a technocratic term that doesn't, maybe works for the district design, but not for the district's mission and vision. So, I'll just put that out there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counsel, thank you. Director Elamin?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to go back again to the BIPOC part again. We've been nice for too long and our children are still not benefiting when we say all students. So, at some point, we got to be bold, we got to put it out there, we got to make it known that we realize that our Black, Brown, Indigenous children have been failing. And so, if this is an opportunity for us to include that, I think we really just need to have a deeper conversation to realize how we can do it and make our families feel included. I mean, being nice hasn't got us anywhere, it's, it's failed our children. We, we, this is a time to be clear, to be bold, to be inclusive of all the families that we serve.
Do you want to share some wording that you'd like to recommend?
I, I mean, it's just the insert, all, all BIPOC and, what did it say? I-BIPOC and intersectional identities regardless of, excuse me, regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs. I'm, I'm still not there with the comprehensive either, that's why I don't think, I, I think we need more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we need more time.
Director Soria?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just for clarification, I was very specific, saying that I didn't feel comfortable moving forward, just given my recommendation, that I wanted to include other voices, specifically immigrant voices, so, big clarification, because I never made this about just my community. So, thank you, I appreciate this. Thank you.
Director Anderson?
Thanks, I've just been listening here. We're going to continue, we have more to discuss here tonight, kind of the next, the next part of this as well, but just, I, I just wanted to, just kind of say that I'm glad we're wrestling with this and, and just to provide some kind of perspective on that, Chair Ellison and I, we, several of us, a number of us went to the Council of Great City Schools training online a couple of weeks ago. And Chair Ellison and I, in particular, attended a training on the role boards can play in student achievement. And, and we heard from other, from boards across the country who talked about the, how they used this moment, that, the thing that we're doing right now, creating mission and vision, creating a strategic plan, being clear about metrics, about what we value and how we, what we see as success and how we define success and how critical, how critically important it is for our board to own that. So, and every single one of them talked about how difficult this piece was. So, you know, you might feel a little frustrated, you might be thinking, what are we doing here tonight? But it is really, actually really important that we're, that we're wrestling with this and, like, you know, having discussion and debate about what words we want to use and how we want to phrase them, because, because this is the thing that, that matters and this is the work that we, that, this is our, our job. And what these board directors across other, many other cities talked about is, when they did this, when they took the time to say what they mean and to write down, right, like, what, how they, how they vision moving forward, that became the thing that they talked about. So, when they visited schools, this is what they talked about, right? Like, they talked about the words that they came up with in this mission and vision and why they're using those specific words. They talk about the things that we're about to talk about, which is what things, how we define success and, and what sort of metrics, what sort of tools we expect to use. That became the thing that they could talk about and suddenly everyone then talks about those things. So, I just, I wanted to just provide some perspective, that it's okay that we're having, that we're having this discussion and, and it's okay if we're not seeing completely eye to eye right now. And I affirm that I'm glad, Chair Ellison, that you're pushing us a little bit to articulate what we mean here, even if it isn't reaching the decision, because we do kind of need to get a little bit more in-depth to what exactly, even if you don't have quite the right words, because what we don't want to do is just kind of say, well, let's go back here tonight and kind of have this kind of vague idea that someone, not knowing who that someone is, is going to write the language. I think where we're at right now is, we have, the, the language is on us, right? And so, we don't need to vote on this particular language here tonight, but it's good that we're being pushed to think about it, because I think, I think the edits will be up to us. So, kind of moving forward, what we do need is for us, us, the nine of us, right, to do the research that we need, do the pondering we want, certainly, you know, we can ask for some support to help us, but to really come forth with some different ideas, you know, next month and we can really continue to narrow down what we're thinking. So, if we don't like the well, word well-rounded, that's great, that's okay, like, come up with some alternatives. We, we're pushing, we're pushing people to really kind of think about what that means, right? I'm personally hearing Amy Moore saying that we're not, that it would not be advisable to omit the words all children, right? So, you can certainly propose that and we can continue, if that's what you want to, you know, want to put forward on that and then ultimately, though, we'll have to vote on all of these different proposals. So, I, I guess my suggestion here is that if you have some different edits you want to make, that perhaps in the next few weeks, sometime before the next board meeting, which we usually like to try and post things about a week ahead of the board meeting, I think, so, in approximately three weeks, perhaps come up with some different, different ideas, different ways to write it and submit it, you know, submit it to the chair so that we can continue this discussion on this piece.
What I don't want to do is come back to this next month, I've got you, and because we said, like, I don't like this wording, I want to give staff some wording that we would possibly accept and let them go back and work on this language and come back to us next month with another suggestion, with other wording here. Director Caprini?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I'm committed to having discussions, brainstorming ideas with one other person, or maybe I think I can brainstorm with two other people, if people are interested in that. But I think it's our responsibility as a board to do that work in our communities on our own and not use staff time for it. I don't have the expectation that there will be any money spent on this district having any kind of community engagement to figure out what our vision is for this district. I just want to put that... I just want to put that out there. So, we as individuals have an opportunity to speak with one or two others, if someone desires that, I'm certainly willing to do that. But again, we can all reach out to, I would reach out to the city at large, I'm starting up my dates, dais and dias, di, dais again, D3 talks and chats, so that's an opportunity. But I just hope that, that folks take advantage of that and not look to the district to do any of that engagement to, to, to help support writing this vision. Thank you.
So, Superintendent, Senior Officer Moore, you've heard this discussion, we don't like any of these versions, we would like different wording, especially around well-rounded. Yes, Superintendent?
Yes, we, thank you, Chair Ellison, for allowing me just to restate what I think I, I heard. All students, at this point, is remaining. We're looking for something that expands the population of students, black, indigenous, people of color. And so that's the area that I think I heard the board is willing to generate some different ideas, have some conversations, and will share that information with you as the chair for consideration. I did hear that regardless of the background zip code and personal needs, by absent of any modification, works. I also heard we'll receive an anti-racist.
Education.
Blank, education, works that prepares them for success in life. So the anti-racist thing, again, I, I think I heard by lack of any kind of opposition that that works for the board. So we're really just looking for, how do we further clarify beyond all students, emphasizing black, indigenous, people of color, as well as looking for some replacement word descriptor of well-rounded. And again, I heard that the board will take that information, pass on recommendations to you as the chair, so that we can help write that, finalize it.
And so just around timing, directors, we want to post our next month's information a week before, so we've got two weeks, if within two weeks, if you could give me some wording, if you could pass it on to staff to include in the information that they send out in three weeks.
Yes, we would need it by December 7th.
Okay.
December 7th would be our last opportunity to provide some information.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Can you move on to the mission?
Yes, please. So thank you, Chair Ellison. Next, we have a set of proposed measures, I believe we're, we're moving to, we, we covered the, the mission was just the adding of the anti-racist, or did I miss that, we didn't cover that yet?
No, we did the vision.
Okay, yes. So the, the mission, I'll just ask Senior Officer Moore to, to share the version of the mission, which is much briefer.
Thank you, Superintendent, Chair Ellison, members of the board. So as previously referenced.
As previously referenced, we have version one and then version two.
Per board request, we added the, the anti-racist to the mission.
Board members, assuming there's no problem with the original version, do we want to add anti-racist? So Minneapolis Public Schools exist to provide a high-quality, anti-racist, culturally-responsive education for every Minneapolis student? Are we okay? I, I see an add. Not yet with this. Director Caprini?
Well, I thought we were enough.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, I, I do appreciate this, because this speaks directly to what it is I'm hoping we finally get to, where we don't have, we're not dealing with the kind of racist acts that are, are still happening after all of these many, many years. I've often said, just like a lot of people have said, if we were doing this work 20 years ago, where would we be? I'm talking specifically as a district. And where would those children be that started 20 years ago, 2000, 2003? So I do appreciate this, this draft. I, I hope this is the one that is chosen, but if it's not, then.
It's not, then.
We'll just have to figure out what other, what else we want to phrase it, but I like it.
Okay, should I just start at the end? Director Riley, yes, no? Version two draft mission, it's on the, yes, no?
No, no.
No, okay. Director Soria?
On version two, correct?
On version two.
On version two.
Okay. Two, okay. Director Caprini?
Yeah, I'm good with two.
Yes, yes, okay. We like version two of the mission.
Okay, we can codify that. Codify that and we'll have that one ready for the December 7th upload and ready for the board discussion. So we've covered the vision, which we, we know we're going to come back and get information, more information with the board on. Mission, it's version two, that you see up there on the screen. And then with your permission, Chair Ellison, we would like to then move into the set of proposed measures.
Director Soria, did you want to? Okay, yes, please go.
So thank you. So we're going to move into the proposed measures for the plan for each goal, and I'll turn it over to Senior Officer Moore to walk us through that.
Thank you, Superintendent. I think for the, the sake of, of time, I mean, I can certainly go back and, and go in-depth into the strategies, but I want to save enough time to, to go over the, the measures, because certainly that'll guide, as we come back with a set of conditions and targets, I think the measures are going to be critically important. And so, if you think about our goal, right, our strategies are a way to get there, the metrics, the measures are going to be a way to see if that goal is coming to fruition. Now, I wanted to share with you that, as we look at the academic metrics and, and in all cases where it does make sense to do, we will be disaggregating. And that's aligned to, again, our climate framework of equity, representation, anti-racism. So we always want to see how all groups are doing, to the reference conversation we just had regarding all. We are clearly aware that traditionally all, there are populations within our school district that traditionally have been marginalized and underserved. So this is an example of, of the different groups that we will have data for. We'll be examining the metrics by these different groups to see to what extent are disparities. And in fact, when we have an overall measure, the traditionally underserved groups, those groups that aren't moving or aren't at the, the same level as others, they're going to have to move much quicker for the overall to move. Okay, so in order to move an, a, a overall metric, particularly when there's a significant gap, those groups that aren't traditionally have moved are going to have to move faster. So, so I think that's one way. And that's going to be part of our conditions conversation. What are the conditions such that we're able to significantly close gaps by race, by income, by language, et cetera? So here are the measures for academic achievement. And we start with the traditional measure of proficiency. And again, the charge was to align with current metrics. So you're going to see some of the metrics, for example, that we traditionally see in the world's best workforce, as we enter goals two and four, those are going to be some of the metrics that we traditionally have not used, but, but we'll, we'll go in-depth into that. But here are measures.
Here are measures, we want to look at the percent of second through eighth grade students scoring the proficient range.
As measured by a reading, you're going to see a deliberate attempt to focus on the FAST, we use the FAST assessment as supports, instruction, we're not using the MCA. So we, statewide, we use the MCA, we'll continue to, to meet that state guideline, but for the purposes of our strategic plan, we're looking at the FAST assessment. So we're looking at second through eighth grade, efficiency reading, which is the assessment for reading, 1.2 math. And then we're also honoring the fact that we have dual-language programming, so we're using the I-station percentage of students above a four. Next, we're looking at academic growth. One of the things that, that we've shared before is that we have significant numbers of students that are multiple grade levels behind. So sometimes, as we're looking at proficiency, we're not necessarily seeing progress that students are making. And in fact, it may take three consecutive years of high growth for those students to eventually become proficient. Okay, so we also want to look at growth in, in math and, and reading, so that the growth we're looking at is fall to winter. And then typically, you align that to an MCA spring if we want to, but we think a fall to winter, it will be sufficient for our growth measure. Kindergarten readiness, we want to look.
We want to look at the percent of kindergarten students scoring at the proficient range.
Math and reading. We also want to look at the graduation rate. And then we're going to look at advanced coursework. And so we want to make sure that we're expanding the percentage of students that are participating, and we call it college readiness, so expect will change the language from advanced courses to college readiness courses. Dr. Fear will provide the support on that language. And then we want students to not only be in the classes, but to, but to be able to get what they need out of it. We're not just placing students in a class expecting something different to happen. But if we're going to put students in college readiness courses, we're going to provide the support. So that is some ability to try to provide those, those types of supports. So those are goal one, goal one measures. And then Superintendent, would you like me to go through all of them or then go through each goal for feedback?
I think if we can, Chair Ellison, just pause there to see if you have any further direction just on goal one, how you want to progress this evening.
Directors, any questions, comments about goal one? Director Anderson?
Yep, just reiterating, what I'm hearing us say is that what you're proposing to just, to measure, to, to assess academics, so academics will be one of our goals, as previously discussed amongst this board. And the way we would determine our academic progress is we would look at proficiency, looking at growth, looking at kindergarten readiness, graduation rates, and advanced course rates. So those will be the metrics that we examine, which to me encompasses sufficiently academic achievement. But certainly would be looking for other board directors to proactively say that that is, that they agree, or if, if they're looking for a different measurement. I do have a quick question, and just about kindergarten readiness. Do we assess kindergarten readiness at the end of kindergarten or at the beginning of kindergarten?
It's actually at the beginning, Director Anderson, and that's always an interesting metric. So the work associated with that would be participation in early childhood and/or stronger relationships with our community-based organizations that, that work with students pre-kindergarten. So that, that work is getting, because we do see a difference in kindergarten readiness of those students who are participating in early childhood programs.
Right, so my, my follow-up on that is, we don't have complete control over that, so I, I'm just noting that we are measuring or kind of judging ourself based on other people's, other people's action. And I'm curious, or would think that we would want to have maybe consider some measurement for like our high five program as opposed, ones that we have like control over. I'm just wondering about, I'm pondering that particular, particular metric for kindergarten readiness, although I agree with the concept of measuring kindergarten readiness.
Chair Ellison, Director Anderson, thank you for bringing that up. That is, you know, after reflecting on that, that is one of the conversations that I, I think we probably should have had more depth on, because to your point, we're basically understanding who our students are when they come into us. So it's a point of information that is helpful, but in terms of how we move that, I think it's quite challenging. And even, even if we are going to move to our high five students, you know, there's a, there's a, a unique challenge there, because not all of our students are participating in high five. And it's just an early-on developmental phase of, of their learning. So I think as I'm looking at that, that would certainly be a, a data point, but it would not be one that I would consider for evaluative purposes.
Right, so anyway, I agree that, that, that particular one, I would be open to more discussion on. But the, the general concept I'm okay with and would be interested, maybe Chair and what the others think.
Thank you. Director Enz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a general comment that is not sort of, although it is about this particular thing, it, I think it applies in general. I don't think that the goals that we're looking at and the metrics that are connected to them, our metrics are not necessarily exclusive to those goals and the, the evaluation of those goals are not exclusive to those metrics either. So I would say, for example, there are many things that are beyond our control in these goals, right? Just looking at the academic achievement, right, we have so many kids that come and go and come and go from our district. That doesn't mean that we don't measure their academic progress and we don't evaluate our, our ability to improve their academic performance, right? Same, same can be said for pre-K, kindergarten readiness, a lot of that's beyond our control, but still, I think it's a laudable goal for us to try to do something about kindergarten readiness, and I think that should be part of how we approach academic achievement. We should be expanding our pre-K opportunities, for example, right? We should be reaching out into our communities and making sure that kids are more prepared. I mean, that's, we're a public school system, we do stuff like that, right? So I think it's good, I think it's good that it's on there. I mean, the, the terminology, student, you know, learning in schools connects with student, or connects learning in schools with students' experiences at home. I mean, that's not part of these metrics really, right? That language is in there. How do we measure that, how connected it is? But we still are going to be pursuing that goal, right? So that's a general comment, and so I probably won't have a lot of comments with the rest of the goals, because I think most, for the most part, that, that is going to apply to a lot of what we're talking about here. So, thank you.
Director Renz, Chair Ellison, Superintendent Graff. I mean, I, you know, in looking at, for what it's worth, when you take a look at high five data, those who participate in our high five program and for those who do not, you do see significant differences, I mean, across various racial groups. So it does matter. To the point referenced, though, the strategy would be, again, doing additional partnership with community-based organizations and/or increasing the number of students in high five to be able to improve kindergarten readiness. And so that is, again, a, one of those metrics where you have to be very deliberate on your strategy to be able to get that data point to move. Otherwise, it would be more random.
Yes. Director Enz.
Thank you, Chief Moore. And I'll just say, like, I, I just, I mean, this, I tried to make this point indelicately a couple of months ago, I don't know if you remember, talking about how, evaluation of kindergarten students and how relevant that is to us. But I, I appreciate that we're having this conversation now, so thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Ellison. I just want to reinforce, this is, this is valuable information in terms of, not to perseverate on just that, that one, but percentage of students scoring in the percentage range is measured by early reading. You know, you're, it's important. It's important because I think it does. Help explain to people. That there is more work that has to be done in our, our pre-K. And so I don't want to lose sight of that significance, but I also don't want it to be a case of where the expectation is now that our kids are coming into us at a certain level and it's a, it's a reflection of the district that we are not doing that. I mean, I have said this repeatedly and I'll say it again several times tonight probably, but we can do anything, but we can't do everything. So this is part of the work as we start to look at all these different strategies and how we're going to measure things, which, which ones are we feeling like we want to invest most of our time, energy, and resources in, into doing? And that's going to also help the conversation around what do those conditions need to look like in order to achieve the outcomes that we want? So just wanted to, to say thank you for the discussion and I appreciate the time to present this.
So before we move on, so this academic achievement, are these metrics okay with everybody? We'll just go down the line again. Director Soria? Director Enz? Director Caprini? Director Anderson?
Yes, other than the conversation we just had.
Director Alamein?
Yes.
Director Enz? Okay. We've been, Director, sorry, Director Jordaine. We've been sitting a long time, we do a four-minute break and come back here at 9:03. You can go out that door. You can go out that door.[1756.15][1756.15]
You can go out that door.
(laughter)
So thank you again, Chair Ellison, Board Directors, for being here this evening. We're going to move to goal number two, student well-being. So I'll ask Senior Officer Moore once again to share a little bit about the recommended measures.
To the board is one, I think, a goal that's unique to Minneapolis Public Schools in terms of the emphasis on social and emotional learning. So you see a set of strategies. You see closely responsive counseling, mental health. You see the language about restorative practices, restorative approach, integration of social emotional, both in the classroom and out of school time, a physically safe and welcoming school environment through the reduction of walk zones, building cleanliness, building improvements, as well as land care, strong. So we recognize the importance of space, that's more, that's in operations, one that we also say is tied to student well-being. And then healthy child development, right, nutrition, physical activity, which is aligned to the emphasis about recess. So here are the proposed measures. And these are some of these, in the appendix are the questions that relate, we call it the construct. But there are a percentage of students indicating almost always feel safe, so we want our students to feel safe. We say almost always, so that, so we're going to look at the extreme and not to get into what, but typically when you're using non-traditional, I don't want to use the non-cognitive, but the traditional, non-traditional measures, social emotional learning measures, typically you're going to get more variation on the extreme. So we look at the end. So we're not going to combine always and almost always, but we're going to look at almost always. We want all, I mean, almost always. So feel safe in school. We also want our students to feel connected. We want our students to feel like their teachers care about them, so that is related to relationships. We want our students to feel like they have a voice in classroom decisions, so that has to do with student agency. We also want their identities to be affirmed, and so there's questions related to identity. And then we're going to use a traditional, which is a disparity rate for students of color, we call it a risk ratio. But again, we want to reduce the disproportionality of our, of our students of color relative to our white students. And so we're going to use a risk ratio for that. So those are the measures for student well-being, but primarily safety, connectedness, relationships, agency, affirmation of identity, and then, again, the traditional measure of disproportionality suspensions. We don't want to take our Iowa off of that.
So directors, any questions, comments? Push the request to speak button. Thank you. Director Soria.
Madam Chair, just a comment and into the, under the student well-being goal, why is the strategy about implementing, implementing a restorative approach to classroom management as opposed to implementing a restorative culture to all schools?
Yeah.
So it's just a comment and, you know, not really a question, but just something to further think about.
Absolutely. No, I think it's language. I mean, I do hear you, Director Cirillo, Chair Ellison, Superintendent Graff. It's language, and I do like the amendment of culture. And so restorative culture, when we're saying restorative approach to classroom management, I mean, when we're thinking about restorative practices, we're thinking not just a circle at the end, but it is how you're engaging students at the beginning, making sure your classroom space is one in which students don't want to leave, making your school environment one in which people want to participate, so you want to have to come back and re-engage and restore. So that's a community in which you want to be a part of. We were, I think, attempting to relate that restorative approach to disproportionality. One of the things that we see in our data is that there's a limited number of students that when we look at our disproportionality data, they're suspended multiple times. We don't do a good enough job yet in this district of those students that are suspended multiple times. And as you look at the increases in suspension, of course, those suspended are black and brown. And so if we're wanting to address the risk ratio, then we have to do something different in our classrooms and restore the first time as we're redirecting and teaching students how to engage in a classroom space. But certainly appreciate the language and the push on the language regarding that strategy.
Thank you. Director Alamein.
Just, just looking at the student well-being, again, when the percentage of indicating almost feeling welcome in the schools. When I had the opportunity to visit a couple of the schools this week, that was one of the things that was mentioned, that students would, a lot of times when they were acting out or not being in the space that they needed to be, that was one of the things that was coming out, is that students were saying they didn't feel welcome in the school. So I think if we can just put an emphasis on that too as well, that would be good.
Yeah. Thank you. I was looking at these, and I was wondering how much these, how could we find out if the student felt safe in school without actually asking them, without a survey? And I don't know how to do that. So I, I do appreciate the risk ratio as a measurement included in the survey questions.
And just at Director Alamein, Chair Ellison, Superintendent Graff, members of the board, the feeling welcome is will be part of the goal four metric that has to do with climate. So we do ask students directly a series of questions on the extent to which they feel welcome.
Okay, so that's further down.
Yep, that's in goal four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, no more questions? Let's start at the end. Is everybody okay with these measurements for student well-being? Yes, yes, yes? Yes, yes, yes? All right.
And I'm looking forward to these measures and the actions behind them that are going to shift the data. So thank you for your leadership on goal two. Goal three, effective staff. So goal three is school and district staff approach to all work centered on students and equity, again reflecting the values that you articulated on who we want our teachers and staff to be. Equity lens aligned to, I mentioned a vision, anti-racism, focused being student-centered. And so you see a set of strategies. And then you see four measures, and so we don't have five. Some, we, as much as we tried, we weren't able to meet five. So then we were able to have, these are fairly simple but powerful. Percentage of employee retention staff retained overall and by race. And we're going to look at different groups, so obviously admin, teachers, ESPs, et cetera. Percentage of racially diverse staff, percentage of classroom teacher vacancies at the start of the school year, percentage of racial diversity, new hires. Now, this is going to be one of the measures, as we said, targets, that are going to be very dependent upon conditions. And as you look at, and this is one where as you research across the country, it's really hard to move. It's really hard to move things such as percentage of racially diverse staff unless you're changing conditions, right? Because of the limited numbers of openings, depending on the year that you have. And so this is one where traditionally we've seen about a one percentage point gain. And so if we're wanting something more dramatic, that'll be a condition conversation. But these are the four that we want to say, we want our staff to be retained, we want our staff to be diverse, we want to have our classrooms filled with teachers at the beginning of the year, and then the new hires, we want those to also be diverse. And I would suspect that target will be more diverse than current population, right? Similar to what we saw with our magnet school data. So those are the four for goal three.
Directors, any questions, comments? Director Caprini?
Um, where is it? I guess I just, and I know that, I'm sure you acknowledge this, I just want to just say it out loud, that number, is it number five or four? Number five, pursue authentic engagement with MPS parents around the design and implementation of equitable HR policies and practices. I'm just going to be honest, I hope that it changes, but I think in this moment, it is realistic to me, in my own personal opinion, but there will be some schools that that's not going to happen. And, and so I guess I say this because I think it's really important for us to first really say it out loud, because it is, it's true, but we need to be really intentional to make it happen. And I don't really know how to do that, because honestly, there will be some parents who are just like, not interested. And that's the truth. And so I guess I say that to, so that we don't get lost in a space where there may be schools where some parents may not necessarily, they're, because they're busy, they're interested in other things that we're watching and ensuring that that practice is happening for them, you know? So that's, I just want to say that, because I feel like I can think of a couple of schools where it's possible. But I do, I can dig it.
So I think, Chair Ellison, Superintendent, Director Caprini, members of the board, I mean, I think, you know, that is one where that's not all, but that is making sure that we're intentional in including those voices. Certainly there will be a nice opportunity under the teacher equity plan as presented earlier in the CDD implementation update, where we have our site-based parent evaluators. That's an opportunity for our parents to be directly involved in those processes. And yeah, there is variation across districts in terms of the extent to which parents are involved in hiring and recruitment, et cetera. So that is, I mean, when it's a strategy, that is something that we believe needs to be done to move the metrics. And so I think that is intentionally put there. Certainly, Senior Officer Self is going to speak more on that, but that was intentional.
Good, thank you.
Director Soria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have a strategy that focuses on the effective distribution of teachers, but none of the proposed metrics measure which students have access- But none of the proposed metrics measure which students have access to our highest quality teachers. So my question is that can we get measurements for this goal that measures students' access and disaggregated by race? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Number four?
I'm not sure, but I just, because I appreciate the comment, I'm wondering if that involves number four during the contractual barriers to the equitable distribution and the recruitment and hiring and retention of high-quality diverse teachers and staff to pursue negotiation strategies. I guess that's what, I'm wondering if that works within that in number four? Okay.
If I may, Chair Elson, if I could have Senior Officer Sullivan kind of speak to the question there.
Chair Elson, Board Directors, Director Soria, thank you so much for the question. I think this is definitely something we do report out in terms of world's best workforce as part of this equitable distribution of teachers. So I think it is something we could look at to include. I will say one thing you do see missing here and something we've had much conversation about is really, are we able to adequately and effectively kind of rate our employees as effective or not? And I think there are a few challenges there. I think one part of it is our performance management systems have been designed really as support and development, not as high-stakes tools, so to speak. I think the second thing, very different than some of these other metrics, like our new hire percentages, there's kind of a false sense of precision there, if that makes sense. And I think we get a little nervous about that. And then I think the third piece is we are actually right now updating all of our performance management systems specifically to align to our equity competencies. So there will be likely new systems. So I think one thing we could do is look at in partnership with ARE, could we look at some praxis? Some of the things we do to present for a world's best workforce are things like years of experience out of teaching or out of licensed teaching or out of permission teaching. And again, those don't necessarily correlate always with quality instruction, I think, but they can, there are things that S and the state look at. So those are things we could look to include as well. If that answers your question. I do think it's a very important, a very important metric for our district, especially as we look at our current distribution of teachers. We know that our students of color, our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch are disproportionately taught by less experienced teachers across the system. So part of that is, to Director Caprini's point, some deep work we need to do with how staff move around the system as well.
Thank you. So are we okay with this goal and the measurements? Yes, yes. Director Ali? Okay, Director Caprini? Thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
Table to myself, I'll take my mask off. Goal four, school and district climates. So again, this is one that I think is very reflective of the values of this board, the strategies focusing on the climate framework, the equity competencies, as mentioned, and there is some overlap in terms of driving district hiring and retention practice, professional development, professional support systems, consistent opportunities for youth to provide feedback. This is one that also looks at student placement policies, and we were saying that integrated learning environments, both racially and economically, support positive school climates, and then also an emphasis on community partnerships. We want to bring, be more deliberate in partnering with our community-based organizations, particularly our community-based organizations of color to be able to support our students. And so proposed measures, we think if we do these strategies, and a lot of this work is, if you think about our comprehensive, our climate framework is, we do believe that we will increase the percent of parents that always feel welcome. We will see that our site councils are proportional by race. This is one where we're going to see an increase in our market share. So if we think back to our comprehensive district design, one of the metrics, and I think it was, the question was asked earlier, why are parents leaving our school? They named academic rigor, they named feeling treated with value and respect, and then they mentioned value and respect, and then they mentioned a climate, so safety. And so those are the areas that if we address that, which I think you see in our strategies throughout, we think market share will go up. So market share, we do believe, is an indication of climate. The last point is that we do see variation of market share in schools with similar populations. And so we do see the relationship. We also think that if our staff is receiving the equity training, you know, that we will, those staff, the adults in our system will be able to create better climates in which our students can thrive. We also, though very bluntly, want to ask our students' parents at school, central office, like the extent to which there's positive climate here. And so that's something, you know, the proxy for organizational health. I mean, that's one of those pieces where if people feel that this is a place in which they can be their best selves, and we believe that, people will stay, et cetera. And there's a percent of climate indicators met, which I'd like to present to you in December. I've got a page of about 50 different climate indicators that will make up the climate index. We're currently going, well, as we develop that, we'll go through a process of looking at those climate indicators. We'll want to do a distribution by school, by indicator, to be able to set a target. So that's going to take us a bit of time to develop that index. I think we're identifying, that's a new development by '23. Prior to that, we'll just sell the percentage of climate indicators met, and I'll share that with you when we return in December. But again, that's another one that you're looking at climate indicators. I mean, those are things such as retention, culturally-affirming classes, language offerings, I'm just looking at a few, family liaisons compared to number of students, languages spoken. I mean, so there's a number of really interesting metrics that I will be very excited to share with you in December. But that's going to be one in which we went down, we get those down. You know, there's going to be a lot at the beginning, and then we'll narrow that down based upon our extent, understanding that they're measuring the same thing, do some factor analysis, and then we'll have a nice climate index by '23, '24. But prior to that, we'll be able to start the year with the percentage of climate indicators met, which we'll share with you. So those are indicators of climate, and I am hearing, since families, I think I was, I'm hearing that we may want to do percent of parents indicating feel and welcome, and also look at doing a variation by student. Yep, so we will, I'll take a look at that. That's one where we could break out and look at parents and students. Great suggestion. Thank you for the suggestion.
The request to speak button, if you have any questions, comments? Thank you, Senior Officer Moore. I did have a question of why we weren't staff completing equity training, but you answered that question, so, so, thank you. Seeing no questions, comments? Everyone okay with this? Director Ali? Okay, thank you, thank you. Director Caprini? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Officer Moore, for your presentation this evening. Also, thank you, Chair Elson and the board, for your support. The next part that we had said we would talk about will be the numerical targets. I think, given the interest of time here, we will bring that back at the next board meeting. And again, a big, big part of that will be the conditions for success. And so we'll have that available to share with the board and to really walk through. And at the same time, we will want that same level of acknowledgement and commitment from the board around what those conditions of success will look like. It'll be very critical for us to have that so that we can make the determination as to what those targets will look like as well.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Senior Officer Moore. Thank you, Superintendent. Is there anything else you need from the board? Okay. Noted, next steps. Next, we're going to vote on several items. First is approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes routine items that do not involve major policy, budget, or taxing decisions, fund awards, or items related to the superintendent's contract or evaluation. Director Caprini, will you please move approval of this item?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda has been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Our next several items are approvals of collective bargaining agreements. First is the 2021-2022 Collective Bargaining Agreement with International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers Lodge 71. Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the 2021-22 Collective Bargaining Agreement with International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers Lodge 77 has been moved in seconded. Is any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries and the agreement is approved. Next is the 2021-2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Association of Minneapolis School District Professional Employees. Can I get a motion for this item?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the 2021-23 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Association of Minneapolis School District Professional Employees has been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries and the agreement is approved. Next is the 2021-2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Minneapolis Association of Administrators and Supervisors. Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the 2021-23 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Minneapolis Association of Administrators and Supervisors has been moved in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries and the agreement is approved. Next is the 2021-2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Minneapolis Association of Confidential Administrators. Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the 2021-23 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Minneapolis Association of Confidential Administrators has been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries and the agreement is approved. Our final collective bargaining agreement tonight was the 2020-2022 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Service Employee International Union Local 284. Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the 2020-22 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Special School District Number One and Service Employee International Union Local 284 has been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. That motion carries and the agreement is approved. Our next item is the resolution authorizing a regular COVID-19 testing requirement for participation in high school athletics. Director Arnison, would you like to move this resolution?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The resolution authorizing regular COVID-19 testing requirement for participation in high school athletics has been moved in seconded. Directors, if there's any discussion, please hit your request to speak button. Director Arnison, would you like to speak to this?
I spoke to it last month, so I won't add anything other than the technical, there's just been a couple of technical changes that are alert you to. Specifically, there are some dates. So this is specific to the winter, the winter athletic season, essentially, and we'll have an opportunity to reevaluate based on the situation of COVID in the spring.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries and the resolution is approved. Our next item is the resolution regarding the proposed amendment to the Minnesota Constitution. We bring this item forward based on feedback from the board's discussion at our September meeting. Following that discussion, the proposed resolution outlines our position in a few key ways, primarily saying that while we do not support the amendment as currently written, we do support having the phrase "fundamental right to equality education" in the Constitution so long as the other noted concerns are addressed, including how we define the standards against which quality is measured, keeping the phrase "general and uniform system of public schools" in the Constitution, including indisputable language about funding and taxation alongside the paramount duty phrase, and removal of the newly added final sentence to avoid confusion. I will move this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
The resolution regarding the proposed amendment to the Constitution, Minnesota Constitution's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Director Ali?
Thank you very much. This is related to page amendment?
Yes, this.
Okay. I, I, I thought no on this resolution.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks to Director Caprini and Director Arnison for working on this and helping to put this together. I think as board members of a school district that serves the city of Minneapolis and many tens of thousands of kids, I think it's important for us to be clear about what the potential impact of this amendment will be on our communities. I think the effects will be, at best, nonexistent and, at worst, potentially catastrophic for public schools. At the center of this amendment is the removal of the phrase "general and uniform system of public schools" from the state constitution. And it would be replaced with a "right to equality education" as measured against uniform achievement standards as set forth by the state. So the supporters of this amendment think that the right to these uniform achievement standards are better than a general, uniform, and efficient, fully-funded public school system. The proposed amendment goes on to say that there needs to be written in the Constitution a right for a parent to choose for their child a private, religious, or home school as an alternative to public education, as if somehow that right were currently at risk. And the amendment also removes language that states, "The legislature shall make such provisions by taxation or otherwise as will secure a thorough and efficient system of public schools throughout the state." Why does that need to be removed? We don't want to fund our public schools? I mean, clearly, we don't need to take it out of the Constitution, right? We can just underfund them into oblivion anyway, which has been happening. I suppose funding from, removing funding from the Constitution would just make the process of defunding our schools easier. So under this amendment, I'm having a lot of trouble trying to envision what our schools will look like in the future. Maybe that's really the goal. Maybe the goal is to create a system where it doesn't really matter what your school looks like or who you serve, as long as you end up meeting these uniform standards. You've met your obligation under the state constitution. Your school, if you could even really still call it that, doesn't have to be integrated. It doesn't have to serve English-language learners or kids with disabilities. It doesn't have to promote civil, civic participation or service to the public, doesn't have to teach about the history of racism, or teach about sexual health, or have an anti-bullying policy. It just has to meet these uniform standards as set forth by the state. And uniform standards can also be known as standardized test results for anybody that's keeping track at home. And I guarantee that those uniform achievement standards, as set forth by our friends over at the state capitol, who we have to beg and plead with every year to get more funds, those standards are not going to be in the best interest of our kids and our school communities here in Minneapolis. We know that bias in standardized testing has always, since the origin of testing, been the basis for racist policies. I say bias, of course, as though a uniform achievement standard could possibly not be biased, but we know, and as I teach my students, bias is inevitable in any human endeavor. The question is really who's biased and how strong. Originally, of course, testing was used to support racist eugenics and sterilization policies. Now, of course, people use it to devalue entire communities, schools, and districts. For decades now, because we in Minneapolis Public Schools serve those most in need, our schools are called bad or failing. Our staff and our teachers and our leaders are vilified and criticized simply because they work with those most in need. What's even worse is that these racist policies that denigrate our kids are cloaked in this language of a right to equality education. You know, I'm a, I'm a public school special education teacher in a junior high. You know, I'm a public school special education teacher in a junior high, and people often say to me when I tell them what I do for a living, they say, "Oh, bless you," you know, as though my students and I are somehow in need of blessings or sympathy. My students don't need to be blessed. They don't need pity. They don't need sympathy. What my students and I do need is for folks to understand that we have value. Our schools that serve those most in need, they have value. And that value is not based on some arbitrary, or not even arbitrary, really, but some racially, culturally, and economically biased so-called "uniform achievement standard." Our kids' value is based on the fact that they are people, with something to give our community beyond a proficiency score. And the schools and people that serve them are valuable, essential parts of our community that are worthy of our support. They, in fact, have more value because they serve those most in need. All the people that serve our students, not just the literacy teachers, but the bus drivers, the special education assistants, even us board members have value. I mean, that's why we're here, right? Because we believe in this work. We believe that it has value, because we believe in the mission of our public schools to serve our communities. So to people that support this amendment, the sponsors, I'd like to suggest that if they want to help us in the mission that we have, they could maybe advocate for higher taxes on the wealthy, or maybe they could help us to deliver to the promise of special education funding. Or if they have some time, maybe they could come down and fill one of our open truck driver or special ed assistant positions or substitute teacher positions if they think they could do one of those jobs. Unfortunately, we can't pay people enough to fill those positions, and those positions, though they're not highly paid, they represent important parts of public service that is currently known by our constitution as a public school system. So I know that what we do here is not cheap, and I know it takes a lot of human effort, but, you know, our doors are also open to everyone regardless of their proficiencies. So I don't support the page amendment. I do support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Ali.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The page amendment is a proposed amendment to the Minnesota State Constitution that will provide all children with a civil right to quality public education. So in other words, according to the page, Justice Page, and there's a gap, education, there's a disparity in all 80 counties, 87 counties of the state of Minnesota. And in order to make the change, one has to come up with something. So there's a need, you know? The black and brown students are not proficient in math, science, reading. And you all know that, the facts. And therefore, one has to be accountable of that. So this is high-level advocacy, and this is state-level. It's not something specifically talking to Minneapolis Public Schools. It's talking about 87 counties where all the disparities exist, all 87 counties. And these private citizens are trying their best to create awareness and to bring the high-level accountability to our legislators. So I am not sure even if this is something that we need to involve, other than, we are one of the districts of 87 counties. I don't know what's especially interesting of us. In fact, we are supposed to be the people who are supposed to be advocating for these students who are not proficient in math and science, because we have the largest black and brown students in our district. Any individual, including our guests here, if anybody comes with ideas that can improve, I think we should give a room. We should not try to prove them wrong, even without seeing the results of this. And the page amendment is about bringing this pandemic of disparities. It's another pandemic. And we can't, you know, we have the numbers here, unfortunately, you know? In Minneapolis Public Schools, we have the numbers here, you know? You know, the kids, we are not meeting the needs of black and brown students, period. And this disparity exists in all 87 counties in the state of Minnesota. I don't know why we are involved in this and trying to address it as page amendment is talking to us. Arresting my case, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll be voting no this resolution. Thank you.
Director Ali. Director Caprini?
Well, thank you, Chair Allison. I do support this resolution, and I'm really proud of the language that we've added to it or put back in. And, because I do agree with a lot of what you're saying, Director Ali, but my concern is, how do we pay for it? How is it going to get, you can, they can say paramount duty, but really, what is that? That just means that it's a big deal. But there's no money attached to it. So for me, it's kind of like thinking about, I'll just say roughly $141 million that literally, and so, and then think about the 87 counties that you mentioned. They all receive some of their funding from taxation. So, I mean, the math is astronomical when I think about what that would do to public institutions, because we're always going to have public institutions. And, you know, in my brain, I go directly to the housing crisis that we're in and the fact that the federal government, you know, stopped funding public housing. So my fear is, what happens in 15, 20, 25, even 30 years? Are our children, the children that we're still trying to reach, are going to school in buildings that are crumbling or that are just, you know, packed with kids that have been pushed out of these other schools that the page amendment says, "You can go there." But we're not saying that they can't. Parents have a choice where they can send their children. My concern is that we could literally be setting ourselves up for the kind of crisis we're in with housing. And that's just how I feel about it. And I'm, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think, Director Ali, to your question, why are we, why is Minneapolis getting involved? I think Director answered that question when he said, "What's the outcome of this amendment, this constitutional change, maybe to Minneapolis Public Schools? Maybe nothing, but maybe it could be a catastrophe for us." And so this resolution just says, okay, we agree that there should be a fundamental right to equality education. We do believe that, but we want to make sure it's funded. We want to make sure that it's not measured, you know, with standardized tests. And that's just what this resolution is talking about. And so, yes, yes, and. So yes, we support the amendment, and we need to see these changes. Or no, but, no, we don't support the amendment, but if you edit this language, we could. So Director Ali.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the debate, this debate belongs to the state Capitol, not here, in my opinion. That's the people who are, this is above our pay grade. That's the legislators that we have elected them, and they need to have the responsibility. They are accountable of making sure that each child in the state of Minnesota gets the best education, regardless of their background and ethnicity. Okay? So I hear that Director Caprini mentioned about the finance. That's what legislators are supposed to, that's what they need to discuss about, as they are going to have the debate on this. But rather now, it seems when we rush this before the debate take place, I believe, people have may say Minneapolis Public Schools have this opinion on this matter. Again, this is, this is not our mandate. In my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Elamin?
You know, I have to say that I agree with Director Ali in just trying to figure out what's the purpose of this resolution. It's like we're trying to prove a point. And I would rather for us not to take a position than to try to prove a point. Unfortunately, we have come to this drastic measure to where we have to bring the awareness to the failure of our black and brown children. I mean, we are at a point where nothing has been done. Our children are continuously failing. Our families are continuously falling apart, being pulled away and separated, unaffordable housing, all those different measures that we could talk about. So for me, I don't, I support the page amendment, but to do a resolution to try to prove who's right or wrong, I can't support that. Our children are the ones who are suffering, and we are at a point where whatever we have to do, we're going to do it to make sure that they begin to succeed and that they begin to benefit from being in our public institutions and that our public institution recognizes the failure that has taken place over decades. This is unfortunate that we have to even get to this point, but we are here. And to try to bring something like this to me, says we're trying to prove a right or wrong, just stand back and let the matter go on its own, like we have done on several different things. So for me, it's, I don't support it.
Thank you. Director Soria?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really do appreciate this conversation, because like at the end of the day, you know, I agree with some points of the different directors that spoke. You know, we cannot deny the fact that our district is $67 million underfunded for special ed and ELL, right? So the state does have a responsibility, you know, to our, all of our children. And I just fear sincerely, living here in Minnesota, how we are losing ground to this right-wing, you know, conservative agenda that doesn't, like, nothing is going to be resolved at the Capitol, honestly. Nothing is going to take place, right? So I do appreciate that we're trying to do something, but I do have a question, well, two questions, that, did we engage in conversations with any of the advocates to come up with this language proposal for the resolution? And because I do appreciate the fact that, you know, it's like, I do support the page amendment. I do support that, you know, something has to give in, something has to happen, good intentions. I don't feel it's going to get anywhere, and I'm not afraid to say that publicly, honestly, because we don't have the political will in the state, and we don't have the majority either in the Senate. So that's my question, because that would be a concern if we brought something together without taking in consideration people that have worked very hard in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Caprini?
Thank you. What's your name?
Director Allison.
Director Allison. I'm sorry, I'm hungry.
It's late.
I am, oh, gosh, what was I going to say? I'm so hungry. I, this is, oh, Director Ali, I appreciate your passion, and I don't disagree that, you know, quality is important, and I don't disagree with you either, but I cannot, in good faith, believe that the legislature is going to fund us in a way that is going to support us to even exist eventually. It's, it just, it paramount duty? There's no language about how we pay for it, nothing. It just, it completely is eliminated from the language. And that's supposed to make us do better? That's supposed, because now we're really going to figure something out, because they took away our funding, but nothing's free. And, you know, about 15 years ago, no, maybe not quite that long ago, 12 years ago, I asked the question, "What does it cost? What is the per pupil dollar amount?" I asked this to someone from the legislature, and not in this area. What is the number? They quickly found someone else to talk to. They couldn't answer it. They could not answer what that per pupil dollar amount is. And so what does that tell me? That tells me that if it's paramount duty, and that's, that's all that it is, and it's going to be quality, and you're going to take out all the language that has anything to do with funding, to me, that says they could give us a, I don't know, a bag of rocks and say, "Good luck, go teach the children." And I don't mean, I'm not trying to be funny. It's just like, this is a big deal. And you know what? It's not just the state or the legislature who's going to make this decision. This is an attempt to put this on the ballot, so this is going to become something that we're all going to have to have conversations about. So in my opinion, I would like for us to get to a place where we can either align with the language that we've put together in this resolution that secures funding, $141 million for this year. It's, and it could fluctuate, but when you talk about 87 counties and public institutions, we're looking at Mad Max Beyond Thunderdome, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Arneson?
Thanks. I am just going to say that I disagree with the idea that this debate doesn't belong here and only belongs at the state. I believe that this, regardless of what happens, that with this discussion, this decision at the state level will have a direct impact, not only on our school district, but every school district in Minnesota, and I think that it's appropriate for every school board to weigh in on this. It was a group of private citizens that wrote this resolution and brought it to the state for consideration, and it is more than appropriate for a group of policymakers, local policymakers and school boards, to weigh in on this. And this is how we do it. This is the format that we have available to us, and it's through resolution, and this is how we have a discussion as a board and ultimately reach a decision via vote. So with that, Chair, I'd like to call the question.
All right. Call the question. So no further discussion? All those in?
Put the vote on.
You get to vote on calling the question. Oh. It's not debatable. All those in favor, call the question, say aye. Aye.
No, no.
All those opposed, say no?
I say no.
I'm sorry. You vote, so. Yes, it's a little no. Oh, did we catch, I'm not sure. Is that passed? I'm not.
It has to be the pass, but.
Yes.
I heard two noes.
Heard two noes and so forth, eyes.
Call the roll call, you know?
So, debate ends. So we're going to vote on the resolution.
Madam Chair, I'm so sorry, but I did ask a question, and that was not answered. So before I vote, I have to have that response, whether we did engage in conversations with the leaders that have been advocating for this amendment.
I'm sorry.
Going on board, the question's been called.
Yeah. No further discussion. I'm sorry.
I cannot support it if my question is not answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
So.
That's disrespectful. So it's disrespectful, Director.
So on the resolution, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no?
No.
One, two, three, four. I heard four ayes and three noes.
I say no.
So we, Brian, can we do a roll call on this vote, please?
Yes. Director Arneson?
Aye.
Elamin?
No.
Ali?
No.
Soria?
No.
Ins?
Yes.
Jordan? Caprini?
Aye.
Polly? Chair Allison?
Yes. So four ayes, three noes, that resolution passes. So.
Not the resolution.
I'm sorry?
What passed is not the resolution, is according to the question. That's what, the resolution, we have to vote for the resolution. That's what, the resolution, we have to vote for the resolution. That's how I.
We just, no, we, we've called the question. That passed. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. That passed. We just did a roll call on the resolution.
All right. That's fine. Anyway, the results will be the same.
We did vote on the call to question. Yes.
You did vote on that, and you said no.
That, that's fine. The results will be the same. So anyway, that's fine.
Okay.
Yes, I, I mean, if we don't tank what we're doing regardless of what passes, if our children continue to fail, we're not going to have children in these schools. So I understand that out there, regardless.
Thank you. And Director Sorio, yes, I had conversations with the authors of the.
And I have to, like, for over a year.
I think it's too late for the answer.
So thank you. Moving on, our next three and final action items tonight are to authorize.
This is the problem I'm having here. Like, why are you disrespecting me? Like, seriously?
Director Sorio, can we finish our meeting?
Madam Chair, yes, but you have to tell him as well.
Can we?
I will not tolerate this disrespect from you, Director Ins.
Thank you.
Will not.
Thank you, Director Sorio. Final items tonight are to authorize an award bond sales. Directors, each of these sales requires a two-thirds majority of approval, and so each call will be, each vote will be a roll call. Director Caprini, will you please move the resolution relating to the bond sale labeled
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Approval of resolution 2021B has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Director Ins is, I'm assuming that's from before.
Doesn't.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Arnison.
Aye.
Elamin.
Yes.
Ali.
Yes.
Sorio.
Yes.
Ins.
Yes.
Jordane. Caprini.
Aye.
Pauli. Alisson.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Director Caprini, will you please move the resolution relating to the bond sale labeled 2021C?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Approval of resolution 2021C has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Brian, will you please call the roll?
Arnison.
Aye.
Elamin.
Yes.
Ali.
Yes.
Sorio.
Yes.
Ins.
Yes.
Jordane. Caprini.
Aye.
Pauli. Chair Alisson.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Director Caprini, will you please move the resolution related, relating to bond sale labeled 2021D?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. Approval of resolution 2021D has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Brian, will you please call the roll?
Arnison.
Aye.
Elamin.
Yes.
Ali.
Yes.
Sorio.
Yes.
Ins.
Yes.
Jordane.
Caprini.
Aye.
Pauli. Chair Alisson.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Seeing the hour, I'm going to skip director reports.
I just have one.
Okay.
Finance Committee. Our.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Caprini?
Our next Finance Committee meeting is November 16th. So I'll see you then. And then just for the record, as far as the park at Hall, there is going to be a fence around it. It was in our board update, I just read. I just wanted to make that clear to the public, that there will be a fence around the court. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Director Arnison, can I please get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Still moved.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries, and we are adjourned. Our next meeting is committee of the whole meeting on November 23rd. And members of the public, if you wish to join us for that or any other upcoming meetings, please visit our website to register online or to call the board office in accordance with our current meeting guidelines. Good night.